Ladies and gentlemen, we will be starting our regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council at 6:15 PM. Madam Clerk, may you please take your call?
Yes. Nancy Breyer is absent. Robert Constant.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Wenzel.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And before we start here today, I know I spoke with our Madam Clerk. We are going to honor our police officers, especially those who fallen police officers in the city of Dearborn Heights as it is Police Officers Week. And so, my heart is out with all of the police officers in our city and across our country. I have family in law enforcement, and this is a tradition where we allow our clerk to give a tribute. You can go wherever you'd like, whatever you're more comfortable with. And so, I am going to hand this over to Madam Clerk before we begin.
Okay, this tribute, you can hear me okay?
Yep. Before we say anything, if your phone is on, I ask you to mute it. Please, no side conversations out in the audience. Let's have a productive meeting, and so we can get us all home soon and quick back to your families.
Okay. Jason Anthony Makowski was born and raised in Dearborn Heights. He grew up on Charlesworth at the corner of Ashley. He was born to Marilyn Botcher Makowski, 1948 to 2007, a social worker for the Veterans Administration, and Frank Makowski, 1947 to 2001, who retired as a detective for the city of Dearborn Heights. He has an older sister, Tara Makowski Webster of Florida. Jason attended Saint Mel's Catholic Church on Inxter Road north of Warren, Riverside Middle School, and Crestwood High School. After graduating high school, he attended Schoolcraft College and majored in criminal justice. Jason wanted to follow in his father's footsteps, as well as the footsteps of his uncle Frank Botcher, who we met the other day, and cousin Mike Botchers, who we saw the other day, who were Dearborn Heights police officers. Jason put himself through the Wayne County Regional Police Academy at Schoolcraft College in 1995. He graduated ranked number one in academics for his academy class. At that time, police jobs were scarce, and he took a job with Gross Point Park Public Safety, until an opening was available with the Dearborn Heights Police Department. Jason proudly wore his father's number seven badge while protecting the citizens of Dearborn Heights. While working full-time as a police officer, Jason earned his bachelor's and master's degree in public administration from Madonna University. Jason had aspirations to attend law school. On May 24, 2006, Jason was working a traffic overtime detail. He was finished with his detail and could have concluded his shift, but he heard a radio run on Norborn Ann Arbor Trail. There was a report of a man shooting garbage workers. Responding officers arrived and were pinned down by gunfire. Jason, who was a trained special response team officer, went to position himself in a backyard across the street from the threat. Jason knew he had to get a technical advantage to end the threat to his fellow officers and Dearborn Heights residents. Jason positioned himself behind the cover of a brick home. While Jason was trying to engage the shooter to stop the threat, the shooter shot Jason in the face. The shooter continued to engage all responding officers with gunfire, making it difficult to extract Jason from danger to medical attention. Ultimately, Jason was carried by officers from multiple jurisdictions to a Dearborn Heights Fire Department ambulance waiting on the next street. Jason was taken to Garden City Hospital and airlifted by Med Flight to the University of Michigan Hospital, where his mother had to make the difficult decision to take Jason off of life support the following day. While Jason was being conveyed to the hospital, members of the Detroit, I'm sorry, Dearborn Heights Special Response Team arrived, developed a plan, and aggressed to the shooter who was still engaging officers with gunfire. That team was able to put their countless hours of training to use and were able to end the threat. Credit should be given to Mark Myers for ending that threat. Jason was 31 years old and had a son, Cameron Anthony Makowski, who was three years of age at the time of his death. Jason had served 11 years. Jason had an unmatched intellect and drive. There is no question he had a promising career ahead of him before a gunman cut his life short. He was a brilliant and driven man who no doubt would have been our captain, deputy chief, or even chief at this point. When Jason set out to do something, he educated himself on the subject and accomplished it with 100% effort and meticulous attention to detail. On May 25, 2022, a small group of current and retired Dearborn Heights officers, 20th District Court staff, and Jason's closest family and friends celebrated his life at his grave at Saint Hedwig's Cemetery. In attendance were his son Cameron, Cameron's mother Carrie, and Jason's best friend Tony. Those who grew up with Jason along with his Blue family from the Police Department and court shared fond stories of Jason with Cameron. Jason's best friend Tony was able to track down Jason's first gun that was given to Jason by his father Frank. That gun, a Glock 17, was given to Cameron in memory of his father. Sergeant Suggs was able to gather his entire shift for an impromptu procession to Jason's gravesite to pay respects to Jason and to show Cameron how important and loved his father was. Cameron was very grateful for this display of love in memory of his father. Many survivor of family members of fallen law enforcement officers, their main complaint in their fallen hero's department forgets about them. All their accounts are the same. The department was good to them for a few years, and then things trailed off and the context stopped. We cannot forget the officers who gave the ultimate sacrifice to protect their citizens and their brothers and sisters in blue. There are many current and former city employees who also will never forget Jason Makowski, and they make an effort to celebrate his life. We need to make sure all employees and citizens of the city of Dearborn Heights know this story, know his bravery, and know his sacrifice. Jason Anthony Makowski, end of watch, May 25, 2006, father, hero, protector, warrior in fire. His life mattered. As each of you travel and patrol, to drive by Charlesworth and Ashley and reflect that a hero grew up there. As you drive on Norborn north of Ann Arbor Trail, take the time to remember that a father gave his life to protect the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Jason was laid to rest at Saint Hedwig Cemetery. He is with his mother Marilyn in a mausoleum at the Ford Road entrance. He is on your left, just after the entrance, before the traditional gravesite starts. Tell his story, keep his memory alive.
Thank you so much. We are going to do a moment of silence for Jason and his family. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And I always mess up the names, so I'm not going to. But one of the rooms at the Police Department is named after another fallen officer.
Dowdade.
Okay. And I do have just Patrolman Robert Dowdade was killed driving during a high-speed pursuit when his patrol car skidded off the roadway and struck a tree on Warren Road near Silvery Lane. And he was badge number 37, and his end of watch was August 22 of 1966.
Thank you so much. You know, we see this, I mean, we're seeing this day in, day out. A lot of our officers across the country are risking their lives, and the truth be told, this is not an easy job. I mean, it's not job physically on these officers, mentally on these officers. With the growing crime rates, like, we need to be as supportive as we can, our brave men and women, both in police and in the Fire Department. And so, you know, my heart really goes out for them. I know that we'll be able to have some of these comments from council members, so I'll save my comments for them. Next up here, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah. Thank you, sir. I need a pen. Thank you. Next up is Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of May 23, 2025 as outlined in 4A.
Second motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have minutes of the regular meeting of April 22, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 22, 2025 as outlined in 4A.
Second. All right. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Let's do that again. All in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is 4B, minutes of the special meeting of April 29, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of April 29, 2025 as outlined in 4B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Let's draw in the ayes, please. Next up, we have 4C, minutes of the special meeting of May 6, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of May 6, 2025 as outlined in 4C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Number five is public hearing and public comments. This is going to be open up for the first two minutes here. I ask you to please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening.
Time's up.
Good evening. My name is Hassan Bazey. I live on Sheham. Please, Mr. Council Chair, if I go a few seconds above, allow me. I meant to call you, but it didn't work. So, I mean, there's a lot I want to talk about, but there is one thing, especially at this time, it might not be important to some people, but it is very important to all of us and the majority, which is our safety. I don't want to talk tonight about the signs all over the city on every corner. I really don't want to talk about the garbage cans, how they throw them in the street on the garbage day, the cars parked in the streets. I don't want to talk about this right now. I don't want to talk about the grass and all the mess that going on in the city. I really don't want to talk, I don't wash my car in Dearborn Heights anymore, unfortunately, because every project takes two, three, four, six months, one year sometimes, and I'm ready to challenge anybody who wants me with this. I'm not going to talk about all of this mess here. Hopefully, the next administration, and when the election comes and the next people elected to the city council, will start to see how miserable we are in Dearborn Heights. I had a meeting today in neighboring city. You know, I drove beautiful. The streets are clean, nice, people drive slowly. It's unreal how this city went down. I mean, hopefully, the next mayor, whoever it's going to be, and the next city council, and the next administration, and even the people who work in the city, they work from their heart. That's a shame, you know? I was talking with my friend here, Mr. Facure, about maybe leaving, or I can go buy better house. I'm not going to leave. Our kids, our friends, our, I mean, you guys like family to us, so that should come into a stop. I want to talk about the safety. The summer is too short here. Sunday, Saturday, I was in front of my house, about 10 kids, I have cameras and all that stuff, and I've seen it going all over the city. I live behind the old Montessori school, I hear the donuts at night, you know? A guy came the first time, he was driving 100 miles per hour, you know? We called the police. The guy came, long story short, I looked at him, I mean, what these officers going through, it's not right. You just said, "How hard is a job?" I felt like I shouldn't call about something like this. But then, another car came, I posted on Facebook, this idiot, whoever it is, he was driving with the noise when, you know what? I reached out to the Police Department. I know in Dearborn, they impound the cars. Why don't we do that?
Ask the administration on that one.
What do you mean? Go ahead.
No, no, this is, I'm telling you, I know you hear sometimes from people, and then they go set, they come next time. I give them a lot of credit, you know, they come every other week to the meetings, you know? We should have, I mean, it means it's not in place that should stop this car, impound it, take it away, let them suffer, you know? Go after the parents. It's not right. I mean, outside, the kids were playing, now we park the cars on the streets. We don't park them in the driveway. Try to have the traffic slow down a little bit, but they don't care. I mean, I urge you, please, impounding the cars, give tickets. Let's do it. I mean, I give a credit for that. I know we're short on police officers. Hopefully, we'll get back to the right number that we need. Traffic unit, I mean, I'd like to ask the chief, or you through the, you know, the chief, do we have a traffic unit in the city of Dearborn Heights?
We do not.
I mean, what do we have in Dearborn Heights here? We have a good people, people care for the city.
I swear to God, nothing.
And, no, 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 I mean, it's okay, I'm a little bit emotional, it was terrible Saturday. I mean, we ask our kids, with the grandkids, to play outside. I mean, all what we do, just keep watching the kids, don't cross, don't do this, don't do that. Why don't we have, why can't we impound the cars if the officers? Do we have the authority, do they have the authority to do that?
So, you know, I mean, obviously, that's a question on the police chief. I do believe we have the means. I don't know if we have the traffic in the neighborhoods to be in 180 square miles, regardless of how many officers we hire, but I do believe that there needs to be more enforcement of traffic, and really, Dearborn is an example. They're impounding anybody that's considered as reckless, rolling a stop sign is considered reckless driving.
Can we, do they have the authority to impound the cars?
They have every right, based on their discretion, yes.
They have the right.
They have the discretion, they do, based on their discretion.
I mean, overall, I just want to vent a little bit, just want to thank you for what you guys do all the time. Hopefully, I don't know if it's too late now, but good luck for the next year for all of us. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, Chair.
You know, for several meetings, I've stated that we, you know, why don't we have the highest fines and the highest penalties in the country? There's nothing stopping us from doing that. We could tomorrow have the highest fines of any city in the country, or we could have the highest penalties in any city. And why we don't do it, and I've been saying it for a long time, I don't know why. I mean, you know, even if we get fully staffed, which is asked for in our budget, each police officer is responsible for 1,200 people. That's fully staffed. And that's outrageous. I mean, if something ever happened, you know, not saying it would happen, but if there was a, you know, some kind of thing going on, each police officer, I got to take care of, I got to stop 1,200 people. It's impossible. I mean, 100 officers would be understaffed. You know, we need to come up with some kind of money. I know the Police Department is our biggest part of our budget, like $17 million, but you got to look at what you get for it. I mean, the best Police Department, it's possible to have the best Police Department in the country if we really put our minds to it, got all the grants that are out there, you know, all the funding that's available, and things like this. It happens at my house all the time, people running stop signs, and it's just, they're not afraid. When I was a kid, or I was a younger person, it was the biggest, scariest thing to roll a stop sign. And now, it's like a privilege they have, it's their honor to run a stop sign, go right through them, if kids are there, everything. And I'll jump on the street, I'll look at them, and they'll go through the next one, and then the next one, just to taunt me. It's ridiculous. And I, Hassan, I sympathize with you, because I'm sure everyone here has witnessed this around their houses, and we got to do something about it.
Thank you so much. Well, let's hear from the council members. We're going to have our moments to have our public comments. How are you, ma'am? You have two minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Sukminski, Amboy, Dearborn Heights. I wasn't going to speak until Mr. Hassan Bazey spoke. Friday, Amboy Street, probably 6 o'clock, I'm not sure of the time, we hear a loud boom. My husband thought I was putting gas in the lawnmower and then it blew up. It was a car racing down Amboy who hit a parked car, who pushed the parked car one whole house length and up onto the curb. I think both cars are totaled. And until we start taking these cars away from these kids, they're not going to care about a ticket. They whip out their money from their large wallets, and it doesn't impact them. We have to do what Dearborn's doing, we have to get the parents involved, we have to hold them responsible, and we have to get these cars impounded. The car that was hit was a young girl who goes to college, you know? She's going to have to fight this out for how long? And now she has no transportation. Besides the fact, it was a Friday afternoon, kids are outside playing, and this car was flying down the street.
Thank you.
Good evening, again.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
You know the address. I just want to talk about amendment to have overtime for the Police Department, the amendment for the Police Department for overtime. Just want to ask the chief, Mr. Haydar, and I don't mean it in a bad way, how many police officers we are short? Five. Any reason we do not have five police officers waiting to be hired?
I want you to answer your question, and if you're going to answer, respond to them, please, I need you at the mic.
We have a good chief on the way.
So, at this point, we are at, we hired an officer recently, and we had an officer return to work, so it brought us up to 50. We have, I'm sorry, 40, and we have five police officers that we are doing background checks on at this time. We should have those five police officers hired by June 1st, and we'll be fully staffed at 45. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I recommend that you really increase the budget of the Police Department to hire more police officers, because we need more. The city stands on three things, police, fire, we have a great fire department, and DPW. So, we need to basically concentrate on those three things in order to feel safe in the city and to serve our youth and our public. I hope you consider that in your budget, not this year, maybe next year. But we need to make sure that the safety of our kids and the safety of our residents are really taken care of. And thank you, chief.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? How you doing, sir?
Good.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Trupkowski, Columbia Street. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Going through the payables here, fund transfer and current claims, I know that the city has an agreement with the union and negotiated contracts to pay for educational expenses and stuff like that, but I'm not so sure that's the same with appointed or employees or anything like that. But for a person to come in here with a job less than a year, to hand over a $6,000 tuition fee to the city to pay their bill, is a little ridiculous to me. Let's show some longevity here, or whatever the rule is on this, but less than a year, what are we, a Friends of the Mayor, or what, you know? So, that's my question. It's item 33. If you want to look into it, table it, do whatever, but that's one of my concerns. And also, just like everybody else, I live on Columbia Highway. I have a gentleman who thinks it's proper to put his two kids on his motorcycle and ride them through the neighborhood, up and down on the curb, the sidewalk, and everything else, and then he has his other two children to tail around on their mini bikes. I got video of this guy, he does four houses in four seconds. That's a house per second. The average house is, what, about 60 foot long? So, how fast is he going? 40 on the sidewalk? So, if you're ever in the area of, you know, Joy Road and Inxter, Trigulandown, Columbia, Amherstasee, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move, we're not up to Zoom. Okay, and seeing none?
Council Chair.
Yeah.
I was going to do an audience statement.
Sure, you can do from your desk, whatever you want.
Tom Wenzel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
You got two minutes.
This past weekend, we had our second annual Family Fun Night in Annapolis High School, and it was a really big success. We had a good time. I want to thank some people that helped out, sponsored Jamie's Kids, our fire and police pioneers and cadets, did a great job, they're great volunteers, we had a good time. Chief Haydar, thanks for coming with his family. Martin Zabaznik and his family, thanks for sponsoring. Mo Baydoun, Nancy Breyer, Treasurer Lisa X Clayton, Hassan Saab, Hassan Ahmed, all sponsored. This event was really, really worthwhile and helpful that they sponsored. The District 7 School District, Annapolis High School, my wife and my family, all the volunteers we had, the kids from Annapolis High School and Crestwood High School, our sponsors, J&amp;T Crova, Dearborn Heights Firefighters, Local 1355, Alseyad Meat Market, Saturn Food, Cordy's Collision, like I said, Mo Baydoun, Hassan Ahmed, Hassan Saab, Lisa X Clayton, Nancy Breyer, Mike Mackey, Hassan Bazey, Solid Oak Sausage, VIP Car Wash, and Mary Beth Meltowski. It was a great night, they had a lot of fun, all the kids had a good time, and thank you everyone for this weekend. We have another event coming up, it's our 32nd Annual Ecorse Creek Rain Guard Maintenance Program, this Saturday, May 17, at the Richard A. Young Center. It's a great outdoor event for family, weeding, planting, raking, having a good time. We go from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and we have T-shirts, we have food, we have the tools. Want to see everyone there, we have a good turnout from both our high schools every year there. I look forward to seeing everyone there this Saturday, 9:00 PM, Richard A. Young Center. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to go? You speaking as your resident? One minute.
Actually, I want to speak as council member. I want to echo Mr. Bazey and Sue's comments about speeders. Mr. Bazey, that car that passed by your house, this is a car I posted on Facebook multiple times, if anybody can get the plate, because he has an illegal exhaust. I don't know exactly which car you're talking about, right? When you posted, I saw the same guy, and I actually emailed the chief. Second thing is, we can point fingers at the Police Department, but it's not the Police Department, it's the administration. If nobody's going to say that, I'll say it. It's a failed administration, and it's a failed legal department administration has. I have not seen one resolution or ordinance come through the Legal Department that had to affect these juveniles or these teens or anything in the past two years, not a single one. And we're still waiting, and we're working on it, they say. To point fingers at our police officers, say there's more police officers, you can't put it at the Police Department. It's a failed administration. That's all it is, it's plain and simple. Thank you.
Council Chair, Council Chair, may I respond to that?
Let's just...
Because we have passed five, we proposed five ordinance change, and we've started two new programs specifically for traffic in beefing up the program that now has once a month. We've also started that juvenile diversion intervention and prevention program with all our school resources officers in conjunction with Garden City. We have a number of programs we're putting through, and we've not ignored the issues. I forfeited cars. I took bonds on cars, I seized 20,000 cars with my department in one year with Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. I know about seizing cars, and we've, we looked at all the... I know about seizing cars, and we've looked at all the avenues, not just one. But I agree with Mr. Zehren, what the other gentleman is saying, Mr. Bazi, about what we do in towing. I don't just look at Dearborn, because I look at all the other cities. So we are taking positive steps, which we'll bring to you, and we put our ordinances to back up what we're doing. Thank you so much. All right, next.
Lies.
Okay, come on. Thank you, guys. Next up is fund transfers and current claims.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims in ACH wire transfers 6-1 through 6-50 as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, second by Councilman.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'd like to table, I would like to table one item, number 33. I want to see the legality on this, or the contract, how long an employee has to be to get this, and get that back. The second one is the weight trim. Mr. Deeb. Why can't I see it on here?
Number 46.
Mr. Deeb, there's an item on here, and if you could please clarify what this is, we're paying for. It says.
What number?
Forty-six. If you go through it, it says Garden City Hospital Support. Why are we paying for that?
You know, I also had some question on this while you were up, Mr. Deeb. I'm seeing, and I was having this conversation, I like a lot of these things. One, I want to know who the professional engineer is, professional, you know, engineer three, engineer two, engineer five. And then we also have this assist DPW, there was something here, oh, weekly progress meeting. They're charging us $3,000 for us having a meeting with us.
It's not one meeting, it's a series of meetings. So it's a progress.
Well, I know, the process is, they're charging us meetings from us meeting with them from the month, from this entire month of February, so 1 through 28.
Right, so the multiple.
They're charging us more money than our own lawyers are, $215 an hour.
Okay, so the contract we pay, weight trim, was approved by the council, so we have the rates included. So the hourly rates are included. But these are multiple projects. So when we have a progress meeting, these are multiple projects. So we currently have 42 projects active, 42. So it's multiple projects.
Can you tell me what the 42 projects are?
I'm going to send you a list. We actually get in the list to put on the website, the entire summer, between the water, between the sewer, between the CSO, between the pavement, yeah, we have many projects going. And they do require progress meetings, so they're multiple. And then regarding the issue, it is not about the hospital, it's the sewers, it's a border street. Inkster is a border street. So we share sewers. Storm actually go between the two cities. So when we actually look at capacity, we look at what's coming in from Inkster or adjacent city, or Dearborn, or Garden City. So we try to maintain, so prevent, I had them look at capacity to prevent additional, because they're doing some work across the street, and I didn't want any additional loads because that causes.
So that's why I'm asking this question about this. So is this because of the construction they're doing?
Right.
So why would.
They look at our system, not their doing. I just wanted to make sure, so I wanted to know if they're adding any more volume to our sewer storm line, so to prevent flooding. It's not, it's not, they're not helping them, they're helping us. It's, you know, it just, maybe it's worded wrong, but they're looking at our system across the street.
And then also, I'm sorry, council chair, then for these progress meetings. So when we set up contracts with, contracts with weight trim for projects.
Right.
That's their job is to meet with us.
Okay, so this is part of what we pay them. So when we take the contract out for approval, we put the soft cost. Soft cost is all the progress meeting, inspection, everything, it's soft cost. So when we bring it in, it's usually a percentage of the construction. So how it's divided, we track it this way. So when we meet, we track it that way before the envoys come in for payment. It's, so if it isn't them, it'd just be someone else.
I mean, Mr. Deeb, I want to know, and is anybody from weight trim online, or can we get one of them on here? I want to know who these professional engineers are, and why we have just some engineer threes, engineer fives, professional engineers. Who are these people? Who's getting.
I have a list of these costs with the grade and the rate per hour. So this is part of what we, the soft cost that we initially agreed to when the project went out. So I have a CSO under construction today, and you don't charge engineer five or top level engineers for field work. It'd be like a lower level, engineer two or three. So different rates. So otherwise, I mean, you know, so a professional engineer is different than a.
Can I ask, I want to table this and just get us the detail and the breakdown of the names? I'd like to see that. Please.
Mr. Deeb, when you do that, have him give us a better description also on this Garden City Hospital Support. I mean, because this is, that's weird that that's on here, I mean.
It shouldn't have, it is our system, it is on Dearborn Heights side, the receiving manhole is on Dearborn Heights side, that's.
Council chair.
You know.
I have just one more question. Mr. Deeb, I'm still sorry, but during the budget hearing meeting, I asked, like, we have, speaking with Manny, we have close to $1.3 million that we're paying this weight trim, who's an engineer, but we have the best engineer in the country sitting here right in front of me. And like, I know that, you know, you can't, you can't manage to do all 43 projects, but I mean, it's like, I mean, they're basically like, and then again, I'm just kind of thinking, this is not an attack on you, this is not an attack on weight trim, this is us saying, we are going to bring in in-house an engineer, and then we're going to have an outsourced engineer, we're going to pay this engineer 100, you know, with longevity and everything else, this amount of money, we're going to give them 1.3 million dollars. What do we benefit from this?
I showed you in my office what they produce. They actually produce the blueprints and the documents that we put out to bid. So when that, when that, when that, you know, CSO L41, the one that's under construction on the south end today, they produce the documents. They actually do the survey, they produce the blueprint, we put that out to bid. This is what they do. I oversee that, I'm on the contact between them and, you know, and the state. But they produce the documents. They actually go survey the street, they produce the blueprints, they put them out to bid. This is what they do. And this is no different than any other agency. I mean, Wayne County is doing the same thing now, they don't do it in-house, Dearborn doesn't do it in-house, the state doesn't do it in-house. It's, it's so, and it's costing us more because we actually have a lot more projects underway this year than we've ever done, a lot. It's like three times the normal, so it costs money. But it's all figured out as part of the project. So you see 1.3, it was all divided as part of each project. Each project has soft cost in addition to the construction cost. And that's, that's how, that's how it adds up, because we do have a lot going on this year, a lot.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we'll just have this table, not to say, and I believe Councilman wants to add some questions. Sorry.
Real quickly, did they find any taxing on our, some taxing on our system?
Not, not taxing. So actually, we found surprises that we didn't know, there was illicit discharge that we didn't know about. There are some pipes that are actually charging into Dearborn Heights, but that's not very unusual. I just wanted to make sure that we have the proper flow, so that next event, rain event, I know exactly what to expect. So you go to drainage area and figure out how big of a drainage area. What the hospital is doing now is they're containing most of their flow, which helps us. So they contain the flow during high event, rain event, by building a pond. So that, that's actually, you know, that's going to help us in the next storm.
Is there any way to put these costs on the original contract instead of adding them on later?
Well, they're looking at our system.
I mean, for all these engineering things that go on.
So the, as needed, if you recall, I brought in four contracts on RFQ, as needed, there's really no project per se. I mean, this is not a project on its own. So CSO is a project, yes, you put that as part of the project. The sewer and the water main, those are separate projects. But these general engineering stuff, these are not projects, they are as needed, as you go.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. You'll be able to get this back to us by the next one, okay? Thank you. I also do appreciate Beach Daily and I know we're trailing here, and the specifications and support on that, so thank you. Any other discussion on this?
Council chair, number 33 item, I sent an email out to everyone when I got the message this afternoon. I quoted the letter from Mayor Ruth Canfield, Controller Donald Barrow, HR Director, Union Resource Director Chris Sullivan from Kurt Heisey, September 12, 2001, which quoted the 2003 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 290, effective July 1, 2000, which provided for a tuition reimbursement benefit, Article 30, page 72, City Council Motion 01219, also extended the terms and conditions of the 2000-2003 Afscmi contract to the city's non-union employees. And in Section 1, it reads that the city shall reimburse employees for the full cost of tuition for courses relating to the employee's work determined by the mayor's office and the relevant department heads. It is the management position at the time of the City of Dearborn Heights that employees who volunteer to improve their education lead to better, trained, and educated employees, which in turn allows the city to provide and maintain improved service standards for its residents. The tuition assistance policy is intended to encourage, assist, within certain economic guidelines, employees who seek to improve their job-related skills and education for the benefit of themselves and the city. And I put in my email that the positive benefits, the process, the procedure to an accredited school, if they leave employment before it's paid off, they don't get that reimbursement policy. But I mean, I did itemize it for people, and I think penalizing an employee, whether she's new or not, she has an obligation for our policy to follow through, and it's to benefit the residents, not to benefit that person. Now, there may be courses in a master's program, or a graduate, another graduate program, that you may not see relate specifically to the city, but the overall product improvement of that employee is to benefit the city. That's why I think we took the time to put the email and quoted the original people who put this together and the reason why, and they're all admirable people. I know Mr. Heisey and the people that related to that family. So anyway, I think that's some things that we have to put for the record. I don't think it's someone trying to steal from the city, but I think it's to benefit the city.
Thank you, Roger.
Council chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I think that's a little outdated. Back then, there was longevity. People, when they worked at a job, worked there till they retired. Now people have a tendency to job hop. And it doesn't necessarily mean that by paying for their tuition, we are going to personally benefit from it. There's no guarantee, they're not going to leave next year. Like I said, unfortunately, it's a sign of the times, people job hop.
Thank you, guys. And look, I will say quickly, I mean, one, we'd have to see the contract. I don't think, I've seen any director's contract since the mayor's just given contracts. I sent it to the police chief the other day, I've never seen this contract. I've not seen anybody, I haven't seen nobody's contract. And so what does it say in that contract? Did the council approve that contract? And number one. Number two, my next concern or question is, you know, here we almost paid out our former comptroller. We're going to give the comptroller $10,000, and the comptroller just left.
I think they have to pay first, and then you reimburse them afterwards. It doesn't stop people from doing on their own, but you don't give them a check to go, they have to pay out of their pocket first.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, like, for example, like, Roger, what I'm trying to say is, we were going to give the former comptroller, was it $10,000? $10,000 for her tuition, two weeks later, she quit. So what I'm trying to say here is, one, I think the right process here, and I think Kevin Swope, former police chief, Kevin Swope did a good job at it. He'd walk up to the city council and he'd say, I'd like to take these classes, these are the classes that I'm going to register for, this is what it's going to cost me. It came before the body. Body had, we had the conversation, he took the classes, and we paid for it. But what's happening here right now is, well, I mean, he quit too, but, it seems like everybody's getting, but what we're used, what would be the right policy here is, hey, I would like to take these classes. You know, this is in my contract, you guys approved my contract, this is what I get paid, and I also get 1, 2, and 3. There's nothing wrong with that, I think that's fair. I think anybody that wants to better themselves and, you know, learn more and get more education to be able to give it back to Dearborn Heights, that's amazing. What I don't want to see is, and unfortunately, it's happened twice, is that we've paid two employees before, again, I don't know what's in that contract, I don't know what's in the longevity, I don't know what former Ruth Canfield made those decision, I wasn't around. What I can say is, common sense is, somebody wants to get this, like in anything else that we pay for, we request to pay, we request to approve something, it gets approved, city council goes out and, you know, it does the work, and we paying the bill. They don't just come out and say, hey, I went to school, I did all the stuff, and here you go pay my bill at the end of the year. While we know, and the mayor knows, and Roger knows, and the, I don't know who the comptroller is, but Manny's here, and the chief of staff knows, and plant Moran knows, the city's in a really tough financial position. It's in a very tough financial position, which none of us here should be ignoring. We all know, including the chief of staff, who's going to get up here and tell me how she's entitled to it, everybody knows the city is struggling. And so if it is, the truth is, have that kind of courtesy to understand that the taxpayers are going to do some things, and we can't approve a contract that we've never seen.
Council chair, this has been shared with you since May 7, as requested by the council. This is a policy that, as Mr. Farina has mentioned, has been in place since at least 2005. Those have never been changed. It has always been authorized by the mayor to authorize the directors to issue these payments. Additionally, this fiscal year, you have made payments for multiple union employees, and it is simply a problem when directors are making this request. In addition, Ms. Sad is almost done with her degree, I believe she has one semester left, so it's not like this is going to be an ongoing expense. It was one of the requirements that she requested in her fringe benefits, which were already included when we brought her in, because she wanted to have that benefit, as many other directors have it in other communities. So again, if you want to make changes to the policy, it has been shared with you. I reshared today due to the concerns that were arise today, not last week, when I shared this with all the council members, in preparation for tonight's meeting, that show you the history dating back to 2005. So my concern is not that we're not in a tough financial situation, is that you have a legal duty to pay this based on your existing contracts. If you want to change that, that's 100% okay, but you simply can't deny the employee currently because those contracts exist.
Mariana, I got a question. One second, please. You said the mayor authorized this, right?
All the mayors have, yeah, it dates back to 2005.
Okay, this is dated 4/28/25, and it was given to him. I can guarantee you, the mayor was out of his office for weeks. So who signed this?
Again, this was discussed when she was brought in, we knew that she was going to be taking those courses since the beginning.
It's not answered.
The mayor gives the authorization. So the policy reads.
Who signed the document?
The department head or the deputy must complete and submit the tuition assistance form to the mayor's office for approval before registration of the class. The mayor must approve the class before the registration is to take place. The employee must take an elective or required course at an accredited educational institution to complete an undergraduate or graduate degree, where the degree pursued is directly related to the employee's work, as determined by the mayor. The employee must satisfactorily complete the approved coursework with at least a C grade or a 2.0 on a 4.0 scale. For graduate-level courses, the employee must receive a B grade or a 3.0 on a 4.0 grade scale or equivalent. The department head or deputy must still be employed with the city upon completion of the coursework. No reimbursement will be made to the department head or deputy who has left the city's employ prior to the completion of the class. To make that correction for the comptroller, we never asked for payment, we asked for a budget amendment. And when she left, we stopped asking for that budget amendment.
Mariana, I asked a question. Who signed the paper?
The mayor did.
He wasn't here.
It doesn't have to be a physical signature, it could be an online signature, or an online approval, which again, this has been approved.
Because if you actually look at this copy.
Correct.
It's a scanned copy, because you can see the back of it, where it says account summary and everything else on the back page.
Correct.
And this is a signature, this is not an electronic signature.
Correct. And the mayor gives the authority to use his stamp when necessary.
This is not a stamp.
Then he signed it. I don't know what to tell you, it's his signature, no one's forging signatures here.
I promise you, he wasn't here.
So what? He may have signed it ahead of time, I don't know what to tell you, but it's his signature.
The document says it was printed 4/28/25 at 12:07 p.m.
Then he signed it. I don't know what to tell you, he could have signed it somewhere else and scanned it in.
I want to table that, I'm moving it off.
I agree.
Again, I just wanted to point out that you're being unfair, because you've offered this to other employees, and this is simply another employee who also has the same rights.
And also, I want to make sure who has authority to sign documents, also.
The mayor, as the document reads.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Any other things here? And Councilman Sob, are you amending your motion?
Yes.
Councilman Constance, are you seconding that?
Well, yeah, I'd just like to enunciate what we want to see. It is a big bill of $600 to $300, what we want to get in order to approve this. Do we want something from the student? Do we want?
We'd like to see the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, then it was approved by.
I mean, what Roger enunciated was the practice of the city to extend the benefit that goes to the union members to the non-union member, i.e. the department director here.
Thank you.
Council Chair? On a different item.
Sure, go ahead.
Item number, I think it's 25 for Duke's Director Dancy. What address this is for? There's no address on the invoice, and I had asked in the past that we have an address on them, or we need to refer them back to you for an address.
Refer back then.
I'll refer back.
Find it.
All right, thanks.
Number 25 would be referred back to Duke's.
A page.
Uh, page 53.
Okay, so we're going to remove that as well. Have that one just updated first.
Yeah, just bring it back, no big deal.
So discussion, 25. Are you going to be amending your motion? Are you going to be seconding the amended motion removing 33, 46, and 25?
46, yes.
Okay. Tom, am I prepared to do the chat?
Yes, thank you.
Council Chair?
Sure.
You know, we regularly deny our table or put back for administration non-payment, yeah, for these things. We got to figure out, is this ahead of time, or, you know, we pay these vendors, because they do the work. And I know there's issues that come up that we have, that we can't pay them at that time, or we feel they shouldn't be paid. But in most cases, they done the work, and they deserve to be paid, so we've got to come up with something instead of denying these.
Council Chair?
I think the council here is just asking those.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I mean, it keeps every.
Yeah, I mean, 100%. I know. I mean, it's, that's our right to do this, and I'm not debating these issues, but, you know, the more, it's going to come to the point where, and we got to solve this problem, and I know we see these problems, that's why we're bringing them up, that we're going to have a hard time finding vendors, you know?
Council Chair?
Are you all for this, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, part of doing the job is billing correctly and accurately. And if we ask for that, there should not be a problem with them filling it out completely. They failed to put it on, and it falls on them for the delay in the payment.
Council Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, and just to follow up on what Councilman Wenzel said, I recall when I was in the legislature, there was a big problem, because like cities like Detroit or Highland Park, they were two years behind in their payables, and that was one of the reasons for the Detroit bankruptcy. So can we, we're in agreement that once we see the contract, if it exists, for number 33, that the tuition will be paid?
Yep, thank you. All right. Motion made by Councilman Sob to amend 25, 33, 46, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 7A, DPW Director Dancy bid award emergency underground excavating as needed contract.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for emergency response contracts for underground services to diverse field excavation and on-grade specialists, and return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contracts on behalf of the city as outlined in 7A.
Support.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have DPW Director Dancy bid award emergency flood response as needed contract.
Council Chair?
Councilman Constance.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for flood response services to premier group associates and return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in 7B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up? Next up is DPW Director Dancy bid award sanitary storm pipe cleaning and televising as needed contract.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
Move the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for sanitary and storm pipe cleaning and televising services to Duke Sewer and Route Control, and return all other bids. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in 7C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Menofsky Maxwell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have reports from mayor, none?
Surprised.
Come on, guys. Let's be nice. Next up, we have reports from city officials.
Const.
Okay, number 9A, Clerk Sinia Alley Vacation Ford Road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the vacation of the alley at Ford Road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue. The utility easement will be part of the closures outlined in 9A. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman, I almost called him Councilwoman. Councilman Constance, any discussion? Hearing none. Well, I will say, I want to thank our clerk, and I want to thank the assessor's office, because we actually initially approved this a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. This is behind the outside meat market, but we had missed a step, and so we had to redo the entire process. We had to actually open up for public hearing. We had to hear from the public, and then we had to come back and bring it before city council. And this was the right way of doing it. So hopefully this passes here tonight, and thank you to our clerk and our assessor for helping us out here. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Clerk Sinia Election Budget Adjustment.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the movement of monies from the revenue account that were received into the election capital outlet 101190981000 in the amount of $28,414 to replace the damaged election equipment as outlined in 9B. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Just kidding. Just kidding. Things are just moving too smooth. You thought I was just going to let you sling by, huh? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations. You got it. Next up is City Engineer Deeb. This one's going to be nice. New fire station site selection.
Council Chair?
There he is, nodding his head. Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve proposed site blank, and authorize the initiation of the design phases outlined in 9C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion? I will say, before we hear anything from the engineer, I want to hear from our fire chief. I want to know, this is just.
This is, and I'm going to be honest with you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's hear from him.
Whatever the chief says, where they think the fire station should be, is where my decision's going to be.
Oh, boy. Okay. Okay, here we go. Mr. Honorable, new raise after 30 years.
So Council Chair? Chief Rogan. For the original motion, should we put to be determined?
To be determined. Okay.
Proposed site to be determined, yeah.
Should we proceed with the motion?
We're putting to be determined. And we'll choose it after, just for now, so to end the motion. Yep, Mr. Deeb was a little confused, but I'm trying to explain, in order to close the motion and open it for discussion.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you know, we've taken a lot of different sites into account, and after all of the choices that we had, putting on the site on the golf course, on Beach Daily, across from the tennis courts, is going to be the safest, best location for our response procedures and to get us out of the response areas from the, where we are currently, we're surrounded by all the traffic from the kids. We have to cross Ford Road 16 times a day, and it's just, it's not a great location. And for a response procedure, Beach Daily and Warren is going to be the best location. If we go on the Warren location that we've looked at, there are lots of problems with that site that the engineer is more suited to respond to than I am. But, and I understand there's issues with it being on the course itself, but we've spoken with the golf operators, they can still have 27 holes of golf with the location of that station there, and so that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Chief. Yep. So in addition to what the chief says, and we coordinate, I coordinate every step of the review process with the end user, obviously. He's my client, if you will. So this is not my decision, it's a shared decision. But, so I covered the engineering issues with all the sites that we looked at. We even tried to go outside the box to look at other alternative sites that the city owns, and I looked at Act 51, the map from the state, and there were a lot of sites that we do own, but they were not, they will not make the response time for the fire department. So we concentrated on the areas that the GIS response time will meet for the north side of Dearborn Heights, and we concentrated on that area. So the site 2B, which is Beach Daily, just north of the entrance to the mansion, just south of Ann Arbor Trail, turned out to be the best from the geotechnical engineering, response time, flood mitigation, everything. That site was ideal. So that's the recommendation I think we both shared. And I'd like to add one more thing. Keep in mind that, you know, the last time we looked at the structural issues at the fire station, existing fire station, was 2021, and these issues are still real. If we are to approve a site today, and I start engineering work tomorrow for the design, I'm at least two years away from a new building. So I urge you, the structural issues, I had a tour with the chief today of the Beach Daily Fire Station, and I'm not real happy. It, you know, we need to come up with an alternative. We need to find a new building.
Council Chair?
I just want to throw out there, I know you were speaking, we're having to talk into Sa. Can you?
No, I want to put something into perspective of what you're dealing with. I know a lot of people is saying the golf course, the golf course, the golf course. I respect that. Nothing's getting built on the golf course other than the fire station. The fire station belongs to the city, to the residents. And the thing is, the most important thing about this whole project is response time. A minute can, you can either allow somebody to survive or die, and that's the difference that we're, everybody's not thinking about. It's a response time.
And I'd like to add on to that, the response time and the safety, the safety aspect, from where we're at right now, I mean, we're literally surrounded by high school kids who are known for not always making the best decisions. I mean, there are hundreds of them that surround our station two times a day. We're locked in, it's hard to get in and out. Crossing Ford Road, it's not, it's not our trucks getting in the accidents, it's people stopping and someone else doesn't stop, and people get rear-ended. And when you're doing that 16 times a day, there's just bound to be accidents. So, yeah, there's many, many factors that went into this, and I understand that the difficult decision that you guys are in, but this truly is the best location.
The decision I'm looking at, the most important one, is safety. If somebody's having a heart attack, that one minute is life or death.
Absolutely.
So, and based on the studies we did, that was the best location for response time.
That's correct.
Council Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I live right by there, that light by Riverside, Kennedy to Beach Daily.
Yep.
I'd like to suggest you put a crossing guard there. Those kids, when they cross, they stop in the middle of the road, they're playing around. They're junior high kids, they don't get it that they should be just moving out of the road. We need to educate the Riverside students that you don't stop in the middle of the street and talk.
Right.
You know, it's a crossing, and I could see you running into problems with that. So they need to understand, cross as quick as possible and get out of the way, because I hate to see you have to spend, sometimes I'll miss the light because there's, I can't turn left out of there.
No, that's a good idea, yep.
You know?
You can do that.
Go there during, when Riverside is letting out, and just sit there and watch what the kids do. It's unbelievable.
So, so part of the new design as well is we're taking an emergency crossing light, and we're also maybe considering a decal lane, so to try to, so the Beach Daily site allows us to do a lot more with less traffic, because we did traffic count on both of them.
What about a crosswalk over the road?
Yeah, I looked at other cities that do that, and not too many. People are too lazy to go up the stairs. I did, I visited that site. It's amazing.
You know, sometimes I'll sit there for a whole night, and I can't even make my left turn out of there, because the kids are just.
I visited a case in Dearborn on Beach.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
It's exactly the same thing, and the engineer told me, look at the count. So they still had to put a signal on the street level, because the kids didn't want to go up the stairs and go over. I'm just.
Yeah, I know. You got to educate the kids.
You can't force them, you know, to go up there.
I have a quick question for us. What about the site on Beach Daily on the hindsight? So you gave us three options.
Yeah.
Warren Beach, Beach in Hines, Beach on the golf course. What about on the across the street, across from the.
So the one across the street, we spent over a year with the county, a year, and they refused, it's owned by the county. So across from the entrance to the golf course maintenance yard, there is a site, and I just noticed last week, they actually started something, there's construction activities going on. So the county initially said they wanted to put a stable, horse stable, and then they changed their mind, they said, "No, this is part of the RV SDS, the Rouge Valley Sewer Disposal System," so they wanted to put some kind of, but we tried very hard. That would be.
But you're giving us an option, though.
Well, no, I looked at two. Beach Daily had south of the driveway and north of the driveway, two Beach Daily options. The north of the driveway is a better soil. It's less prone to flooding. That's the two.
Council Chair?
Yep.
And all due respect to our engineer and our chief, I'm here, you know, and I respect their opinions immensely, and I'm here to give my opinion, that's why there's seven of us and not just one. I'm having a hard time with the response time, moving the fire station over a mile north, that increases response, increased the response time to the furthest south section of the north fire station. You're moving it further away from the furthest south section that that fire station serves. So that's increasing the response time by a mile, over a mile for that. The area on the golf course, we had Google Maps shots of the flooding recently. It was flooded, that area. And I'm in favor of being on Warren Avenue, obviously, and I swore to the residents of Dearborn Heights, after I voted no on this golf course contract initially, and I say it a hundred times, I'm the only one to vote no on it, that I would never allow, I'd do never allow, I'd do everything I can to any kind of development on the golf course. And I'm keeping my word, so I'll be voting no on this.
I, I, I will say too, just to kind of echo Councilman Wenzel, which I also gave my word, and so I want you to know, I'm a very hard no when it comes to building on the golf course. Cause let me tell you what's not going to happen. You're going to have zero response time in 10 years when I think floods and we have the same exact issue. You can nod your head and tell me, but let me tell you something. Our, our, our current, our current golf course, or not golf course, but fire station was also engineered by engineers. It was engineered by Wade Trim, who subcontracted the work to being done by people who then got rid of their LLC. I did all my research on this. I have packets of, of, when I first got on council, looking at why is this happening? I sat down with you also, Chief Brogan, we talked about this. The truth is, at least for me, I can say, I, I, I'm going to tell you right now, if this passes, I'd be very disappointed. I know you guys want it on the golf course. I can tell you wholeheartedly, I'm a strong, hard no on the golf course. So either find that, another solution, but, or put it at the front side where there's already building on top where you guys tell me, and I get it. The traffic and the schools and this, that. That, that would be more of an understanding for me where you're building it right on open land. But when, when I look at this picture from Jason, which I'm going to pull up for us real quick, and I'm even going to show it to the camera. When I look at this photo here, the entire golf course, including the area that you're telling me about, is underwater.
So, so that picture is like half a mile away. I visited that site, it's not what? The site nor by...
Yeah, it is, it's right here. I'm looking at it. Yes, it's not, it's not right here though.
Counselman?
It's not, it's not.
It's not. If you look at this photo, this is a match exactly of what is flooded over here. It's right here, flooded.
That's, that's not the site.
Uh, Councilman Sa...
I can tell you I'm a hard no.
Counselor Chair?
And anything that's going to be built on the golf course, if it's a house, if it's a park, if it's anything, it's a Don Ross Golf Course, it's a hundred years old, it's got, it's a 36-hole golf course. You're right, it does flood. And what I, I, Chief, I love you so much and I know that, like, you have to make a decision because you want to make sure that this continues on. But the truth is, I promise you, Warren Valley is made to flood and it's not made to be built on. And if that was the case, they would have built on it 80 years ago, 70 years ago, 50 years ago, 60 years ago. Who, you, the truth is, I don't care how much engineering you give me, they failed right here on Fort, on, on Beach Daily. I don't put my trust in an, in, in an engineering approach on this location.
Counselor Chair?
You have to find another location.
Counselor Chair?
I'm going to go to the councilwoman, then Roger, then we'll go, okay, go ahead.
You know, right now the city's in the process of buying up property along Ekorus Creek that were, homes were built that were, shouldn't have been built there.
Hundred percent.
And now, and then, now we're going to build something else on a potential flood. I mean, maybe just, maybe it floods once every 10 years, but that 10 years flood could cause a life for somebody. And it was, like you said, zero response time, some issue with it, you know? And, uh, I mean, I, I think that, I don't, I don't know, it's not my job to look, to find out locations, but the south, the north end fire station serves a particular area. I think it should be right in the middle of that area, fastest response time.
So I'd like to hear from Chief Brogan, I know you want to respond to Councilman Wenzel.
That's the, that central area would be Beach and Warren. That, that is the central area. Yeah, that's, that's, if you look at, we have a, a GIS study that shows the travel times, uh, to, to all these different locations and, and it breaks it down by the, the, by the, how many roads or how many buildings would be, or the, the addresses that would get in certain response times and, and it's much faster in, from Beach and Warren.
Counselor Chair?
Go ahead. Thanks, Chief.
I would, I'd just reissue this as a sort of, I attended a, a meeting of the, with mayors on Friday where Congresswoman Tilapia and Congresswoman Dingle echoed to our Western mayors, if you don't use the money, they're taking it back. Get ready. It's, it's, it's not six months from now, it's coming. So I, I think we've done our due diligence. We, it, as, as, as to the residents, I, we have to trust our professionals, but with the danger and the warning from Washington coming soon, we may lose that money.
What took so long? What took so long to get to this point?
I'm going to respond to this and I'm going to respond to this blatantly, straight up.
I'm done with these tactics, man. If we lose it, you guys lost it.
No, that's not true, Counselor Chair. You lost. It's come before you humorous time. You don't put it on anybody here, but take the blame yourself.
It's you.
You can ask him, me. Right, okay, sure.
You lost it.
Yeah, right.
Shh, guys.
Ask the buck.
We're not going to be bullied into this.
No one's going to bully anybody, but you're bullying us.
Find a new site, Mr. Deeb.
And shifting the blame.
Okay. Let's look, let's look at Canfield. Canfield is a dead space land and I know you don't want it there. Or look at, on the front side of, of Warren Valley. I will be okay with that. What I'm not going to tell you is building on 36 holes, it's not going to happen. You're not going to get my support on it.
Counselor Chair?
You know, and I know it's going to be hard with the traffic there. I get it. But, but look, it's a central location. I wholeheartedly believe it'll fit. And, and, and we can figure that out, please nothing from the audience. Spire from the Times Court's also flooded, sir. I spoke with Wayne County about it. I was on a Zoom meeting with Mr. Deeb. That floods. We, we happen to live in a city that floods. I'm not just going to take $10 million because we have $10 million and we might lose it and we're going to end up losing a fire station. Come on, guys, that's like, and I'm sorry that it took this long. We, we asked for almost two years, figure out a site, figure out a site, figure out a site. Now you're rushing us in town because this is the only site. And I respect the chief and Mr. Deeb wholeheartedly because look, I want this body to know, Mr. Deeb is working hard on this. You are, I'm not taking that away from you. I know this is stressful for you, but it is a, for me, maybe not the rest of the council, but for me, and I can see Councilman Wenzel, it's a hard no. On the golf course, it's a hard no.
Counselor Chair?
I personally have been asking for a site suggestion for a year. And it means where, where's, where's the site recommendation? We're working on it, we're working on it. I don't know whose fault it was, but it took a ye, over a year, you know, like you just said, maybe two years.
Year, over three years.
To get to this point. And these were the sites that were originally, I know, I, I heard, I had contacts, these were the original sites to begin with, years ago. And there was nothing else looked at. I mean, now we're thinking outside the box.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Yeah, so I mean...
Just, just one comment about the, the one year for the site. The money came to us at the end of August, which was stipulated with a council approval, which we took to you in September. And then we put out, so we didn't have any money to investigate sites. We didn't have, so the money that came in, Rashida Thibbe's approval came in August, August 27th. We brought it over to council in September. So this is, this is, we didn't waste time. We started looking at sites, we investigated, we did geotechnical, so...
What about Site One? What about Site One?
The problem with Site One is, is the, the thing is too narrow. So I need to put four stations, I know the chief wanted five, but even if I duplicate what I have today, just try to think of five fire trucks going through Alpha Warren Avenue on a narrow site. It, it, it's, it's narrow. It's, it, I mean, I, I didn't, you know, it's problematic. Uh, engineering wise, can you fit it and make him, make him loop in the back and go through the, maybe, but you're right next to residential and it's a narrow site. It is a, you know, we have better sites. If I can find, I looked at sites all over the city, sites that we do own.
I have, I have one more question for you.
Yes.
There's the Salvation Army right there on Warren.
Yes.
Okay. Hang on.
Buy it?
At one point, I knew a friend that was telling me the Salvation Army was up for sale. Okay? Right there on Warren, it's a building that's already there.
The place is...
Why don't, why don't we reach out to them? Why don't those little fire chiefs, chief, can you do that? Say, hey, I know you guys are all about giving back service. I'm the fire chief of the city of Dearborn Heights, we're looking for a new location. Would you guys be willing, maybe do a swap? Maybe we can offer the Salvation Army to be somewhat near the golf course, uh, on its, on its own building. And that way you, you just have a, a spot there and we can take that location. I'll call them.
Okay.
We have to be innovative. We cannot just say, this is what we have and our hands are tied. We have to, we have to think outside the box here. It's, I know it's more down Warren, but it's away from the school.
I know.
It's, it's a huge lot. And from what I hear, one, I mean, Crestwood just got a church for a dollar because they said as long as it's going to stay with the school board, they got a building for $1.
I'll double that. I'll double that for, if they'll give me the building.
You'll give it for, you'll give it for $2?
Yeah.
You got it. But if you want, chief, tomorrow means you can get on the phone call.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it would work, it would work.
And the designers are not Wade Trim, by the way. So the designer is a different company now.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to table this. Chief, let's get on the conversation, unite tomorrow. Thank you. You know what, we'll even take a drive there. Early in the morning. Again, I don't need to shut, you know, I don't want to stop this, the discussion is healthy. If anybody else wants to give their comments on this.
Do you think Salvation Army is a good idea?
Anything?
I say we trust the experts, we own it, that, that it's not going to interfere that much with the golf course. And, you know, God help us, let the golf course be successful, but if it's not, we're not buying, we're not paying for other land.
The, the issue we have, Councilman, is it's, it's a valley, it's designed to flood. If it didn't flood now, right, if one, if we just, in the last 10 years, we've had two hundred-year storms and everything was flooding, okay? The, the issues with that soil, and I, I'm not even an engineer. It's going to sink like what's happening sinking on Ford Road, I mean, on Beach Daily. So like, we have to think about this.
Where the Salvation Army is, it dips down.
Yeah.
Again, have the engineers look at it, where at least, it's a big lot, it's bigger than the lot that we're trying to give to, to them now.
Mr. Deeb, what about the Canfield Center?
We tear Canfield down?
It's right next to where the station we have is.
Yeah, but the station is not about, the station, the problem is the material that was put on the ground.
So the existing station apparently was, was at one time a pond and the restoration was not done properly. It was a wet land to begin with years and years ago. So the report that I discovered that they actually had backfilled material and they used expansive, um, um, slag-based material, which today's, um, inspection in the city, the building, it's still causing, it's uneven, um, settlement only on the interior walls. So the outside walls with proper foundations are intact, basically. That's the interior CMU's, uh, heavy walls, they're actually unevenly settling all over the place. So, um, is the, does, does that extend to where the Canfield site? You, if you, if you're thinking about demoing the Canfield and, and, uh, is that, is that the process? That's another option, I guess. We can look at that. Yeah, I mean, the, the property is large enough, um, uh, we can, we can test the soil to make sure that we don't face the same, um, soil strether.
Let's take that into consideration too, please.
Would you?
Yeah, I mean, we, we... There were some challenges with that, but I mean, obviously if, if Warren Valley is absolutely not, I think that's the best location. If, if that's absolute no, then, then this could be something that we would consider as well. But like the, the, when Crestwood High School gets out, I mean, there are hundreds of kids all around us and it's just, uh, it's just not safe. I, 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 and then Crossing Ford Road.
Do you not like Site One?
People picking up their kids.
Which one is, is the Site One on Warren? So, so that, that one, I mean, and if we do, I know he, uh, Mr. Deeb has had four bays, we really need five bays. Like, like, it was built with four bays and, and we have outgrown that station. We had 4,000 runs a year when we had that, now we have more trucks that are responding. But anyways, it would be very hard to fit it on there. Um, and then I know there's other issues with the parking and drainage and...
Just the truck, maneuvering the trucks in, they're fire engine, they're not small shovels, they're, they're big fire engines. Five bays or four bays, look at the size of the, and try to maneuver it in and out.
Counselor Chair?
Hang on one second, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer is next.
Uh, well, I do agree with Bob. I'd rather we use property we own. We're not going to have more than 27 holes at the golf course. And if we go in front on Warren, you're interfering with the neighborhood over there and we'd have to possibly extend the parking lot to accommodate giving the school some of our parking lot. And we got to go over burn area and everything else. And if you consider Canfield and you have to tear it down, that's immensely expensive.
Okay, I'm going to, look, what I'm going to do, and I don't want to take this from anybody, we're going to take this to a vote. If anybody wants to make a notion to choose a location and take it to a vote, we're more than welcome.
Counselor Chair, can I just make one quick statement?
Yeah.
I mean, for one thing, uh, the, the, the south end station borders a house. So being close to residents, that's not really an issue.
His name is Robert. He lives right next, the house was right next door to a resident named Robert.
Both of them, but, um, I think we're, I think we're, you know, this Site One, I think we're, we're neglecting that this station property could go all the way to the main entrance to the golf course. It's not just this little corner, not just the, the southwest corner.
I agree.
And there's nothing in our contract with the golf course that says we can't take up as much of that parking lot as we want, the building, what we want to build.
No, the tar parking lot.
Yeah.
So I see what you're saying. If you look at it.
Yeah.
You're saying build it right here in the front, have the cars come around and just go out from the front.
We're, 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 we're closed minded and saying just that little corner there, when we've got that whole area along Warren Road. You know, thousands of feet probably.
And you guys, you guys see what he's talking about, Mr. Deeb, here? What he, what he's talking about here is, we have this, and then you also have the strip here.
Yes.
So what he's saying is if you built the golf course up, I mean, if you built the fire station here and you brought the cars around, you'd be able to get a minute out.
Counselor Chair, keep in mind, this is the only possible expansion for parking lot for, for, for the golf course. That's the only possible expansion.
But if we do, if we do, if the school ends up doing theirs, you're getting an additional 60 parking spots.
Yeah, I know, but that's, so consider what we have built at the golf course today and, and with, with, with the, um, improvements that you've done. Um, I went over the weekend and that entire west side was, was closed. I mean, that parking lot was full and we haven't opened any of the venues, just, just golfing. And that was this weekend.
Well, because there's a lot of construction, half of the, I, I go, half of the parking spots are, are broken, they're potholed and this, so that's why it looks full, because everybody's parking in six parking spots.
It was.
If you actually had the parking...
I don't, I don't, I'm not partial to any site, I'm just saying that from, from a layout standpoint, that if four or five bay to try to, to, to maneuver vehicles in that place is, is quite...
Mr. Deeb, can I ask you a question on the record? Could it be a possibility? Could it be a possibility that if we put the, on the fire station?
What is that?
It could flood?
The north, the north side, the Site 2A, I, I have never seen, I've looked at the entire FEMA maps for all of the, the 100-year storms, that site was never flooded.
Mr. Deeb, could it, there a possibility?
Now, can we guarantee the future? No one can, no.
Could there be a possibility that it could flood? It, it could, it could potentially see the same repercussions that we're seeing today?
Well...
Potentially.
I, so it, so you notice that current fire station, the outside walls are not sinking. They're properly built with proper foundations. That's the interior walls. So it's a, it's a slab, slab on grade and, and the outside walls have inverted tables and they're, they're working fine. There's no settlement. So when we take that into account, when we build a new station, you better believe it will be built properly so, as to not to sink. So it, it, I mean...
Is there a possibility that it could?
Down the hill.
If we do it properly, no. I mean, Councilman Wenzel says you built next to the river, um, and we put, um, the Renaissance on there and it's not sinking.
Counselor Chair?
You know, I mean, it, it, you should be able to do it. We should be able to do it.
There, there is one other thing, that we need a certain amount of parking spaces because we will have three businesses there. And if we want to maintain a liquor license, we have to have X amount of parking spaces.
And then just out, so I also mentioned the drainage of that parking lot is also utilizing a, a, um, open ditch on that site at one A.
Why did you give us, why did you give us this site if you guys don't?
Well, I mean, initially, initially, we didn't, you know, we wanted to look at every possible location. So we did. And I didn't, I didn't waste money on stuff that we don't own. This is the stuff we own.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I have a motion on the table here allowing anybody that wants to choose a site, to choose a site and we can take it to a.
Council Chair, I just want to refer it back.
Okay, or we can refer this back to administration. Councilman Sob, do you want to refer it? Do you, Councilman Constan views support that?
You don't have a vote on the, I thought I referred that.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Sob, second. Well, referring it back with what direction?
To come back with the two other locations we gave.
And Council Chair, one other question.
Salvation Army and what else?
Canfield.
Oh.
Ali Deep or Engineer Deep?
Site One.
The problem at the existing fire station, Beach Daily, is not that it's flooding. It was the way the foundation was laid. So it's not, it's not waters coming in the two inches of water. It's, it's the foundation of the fire station.
So it was designed as a, without paying it, I saw the backfill material. This is what we found from the drawing. The backfill material that was used, slag, you know, material is very expansive, meaning that it, if it gets, you know, wet, it expands. And, you know, so it, it, it's a combination. It's not a bad design. It's, it's, it's a combination. Maybe oversight during construction was not exercised, whatever. It, 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 so it is not a bad design. It's.
Mr. Deep, can we save that building or no?
Uh, so we did. Part of the 21 study was what would it cost to try to save it in place? retrofit, cut the floors and, and build foundations under all the pollution?
Yeah, are you talking about language?
And that was much more expensive than building a new one.
I'm saying though, if we built a fire station, can we save the building to multi, to use it for something else? We can do City Hall.
Possible. So, so basically the outside walls, the foundation walls are fine. So the interior, the interior partition walls currently, because it's a fire station, they're 12-inch cinder blocks. They're heavy as can be. So if you are to go to, you know, construction, if you go to partition walls.
They're sitting on a slab, right?
Yeah, it is on slab, sure.
So you'd have to tie the slab into the exterior where the foundation walls are stable somehow.
We don't tie slab. We built, we built, we built footing under it. But it'll be cheaper if you wanted to reuse the building for something else. Once it's vacated, yes, we could. We could repurpose the building, absolutely. Maybe a City Hall.
Council Chair, can we amend the motion to, I mean, I'm recommending Site One. Could we, could we vote on that?
We can.
Do I have to make a separate motion on that or?
No, if, if Councilman Sob is okay, amend his motion on it.
You can vote on it. I don't mind. We can take it for a vote.
Okay. Would you like to, so can I make, can you redo the motion to say Site One?
Yes, I recommend that the Deveron Heights City Council approved, proposed Site One and authorized the initiation of the design phases outlined in 9C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob to choose Site One, seconded by Councilman Constan.
And Council Chair, just so we're clear, this is the site that the chief recommends, correct?
No.
No. But this is the site that gives the fastest response time, is that correct?
No.
No, it's not.
It's the same, it's the same.
Yeah.
It's the same.
The Beach Daily in Warren is the.
That corner.
Yeah. Beach Daily in Warren is, is where we wanted for the response times.
Well, I mean, this would.
Council Chair.
Basically, yes.
You know, I'm thinking the Salvation Army, it, we may just need to buy the parking lot. It's big enough. Maybe they'll split the property and sell, I mean, the parking lot is huge there.
We have a motion on the table. Let's refer.
Council Chair, I'd like, I'd like the motion to include that we look into expanding Site One east to the main entrance.
That's, that's up to engineering though, we're not taxpaying.
I mean, that, that, not just.
Look into, he said.
Yeah, look into it, yeah.
Yeah, but you gotta.
All in favor to support.
Wait, wait, wait. So where exactly is Site One?
In front of the golf course, on the side of the golf course.
In front, right off of Warren.
Yeah, right on the side where that berm is.
Yeah.
All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
And report, please take roll call.
Tom Wensel.
Yes.
Robert Conston.
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Saab. Nancy Breyer. Mo Beidun.
Yes.
You have a time motion defeated. Three, three.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Comptroller's Office Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Deveron Heights City Council approve the budget amendments necessary for upcoming payments as outlined in 9C, 90.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constan. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
We've referred this back 10 times because there's no money to give these amendments.
Yes, I agree. What do you want to do here?
Refer it back.
Here comes our Chief of Staff and our Deputy Comptroller.
What was the question, Councilman Sob?
There's what?
About the 9D, about the budget amendments.
Oh, no, the question was that we don't have money to give.
To move around, yeah.
So the expense line items that we are removing from are not from front balance. They're from various GL numbers within the general fund. Those expense and GL numbers have a little bit extra budget to give to make up for the other budget line items which are in the second half of the page, so we can pay any outstanding And nothing's coming out of general fund balance. They're coming from the GL.
But like, we, like, when I looked at these, the current balance and then the amended balance.
It's a negative, isn't it?
No, I mean, it's, it's an equal swap, 317 to 307,000.
Yes, it's an equal swap.
But what are these current fees, like, for example, like the district court repairs for $20,000?
So with the repair.
We've been asking to fix the district court repairs for so long. Police motor fuel, police contractual services.
So for the district court one, building maintenance actually takes on all the repairs for that building and they've been paying out of their budget, which is why it's over budget for building maintenance. So we took some money from court repairs as well as police repairs for that.
Is, is there a Madam Clerk here? Because I could have sworn our city-owned property that we took from 75,000 was, we used it at the last amendment that we did for IT. We used city-owned money and it was for, it was, we used it for IT. So how, how is it still 75,000 if the last time we amended the budget was 75,000?
I'm not aware of that. I went based off of the current GL and the budget amendments were, I was told that the previous budget amendments were all put in the system.
Yeah, it wasn't.
We still have money in city-owned properties to give additional money to, to other accounts.
No, but then, but this is, this number is not accurate. 75,000 was used the last, just re, just two weeks ago, we, we approved IT's money. We gave 215,000 and I looked over and I said, city-owned property. And we went from 75,000, we moved 45,000. Realistically, it was like, you, you don't have that same amount of money. So you're not giving us that accurate number.
To my knowledge, it's accurate. However, Chief Hernandez can pull up the GL number just to confirm. By the way, I, I do have some.
Can you, can you, George, can you pull that one up from the last one, please?
Motion 25228. How much was it for?
Yeah.
It's already put in the system. So we already have one in the system for $35,000 for the IT amendment, which is motion 25228. So there's a remaining balance in there.
I understand that, but the remaining balance is not the 75,000 like you put on here. You're like, we're get, we're, we're inflating this number, so it's okay to take it out.
Correct. There's a 37.
So these numbers, like, that's just one that I'm catching. I'm just blank.
One second. The original balance at the start of the year was 75,000.
I understand, I, I know that.
Yeah.
And then you guys took away $35,000 from it. And, and so the remaining balances, you're right, you still do have the correct amount, but you don't have the correct total of what we still have available because we're just using what we had from the early of the year.
Yeah, it's 37,500.
So we, right now, we have 37,000 and we're not going to be using that money.
Do, do me a favor.
Yes.
I don't want to go through this because I'm not the comptroller.
Yes.
On this. Give us the right accurate number and bring this back to us at the next city council meeting. But let's do the right numbers here.
I will say that a lot of these vendors have been waiting for a few months and they're constantly calling. I can guarantee you that none of these account numbers are going to be over budget by the end of the year.
I, I believe you, but here's just one mistake that we caught.
Yeah.
So let's, let's do it the right way.
Okay.
And give us the right numbers and give us the right sum and total.
I will say, like I said, the vendors are calling daily on an update regarding payment. I do not want to continue pushing up vendors for payments when I can guarantee that the budget amendments that are being decreased, there is enough money in those line items. I checked specifically for the current as of April 31st, 2025 and ensured that any money I'm removing, it will not reduce it below zero or possibly below zero by June 30th. So I apologize if I had mistaken a couple of these numbers, but the remaining balances are not going to be.
I, I heard, I heard your statement, but I want you to know, you didn't even know that that was supposed to be at 35,000.
I was going based off of the original budget.
But you went from April 25th, you would have known that.
I understand it, but I'm going, I was going off the, I was removing money out of the accounts based on the current balance out of the accounts.
Let's, let's do it the right way, please, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. I do want to give you a heads up that the vendors are going to be very upset and constantly bothering myself and the treasurer regarding payment.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just want to add that again, the budget is fluid and if there are any mistakes, we will be coming back in June again for our final budget amendments before the end of the fiscal year as well. So that's also a part of how the budget works. Anything that's over, under will still be corrected before the end of the fiscal year.
I would like those account numbers of what we're taking, the exact account number, what we're taking out, what account number we're adding, what the balance is and what the remaining is, please. I, I want it to be done. And then I'd also like to get a, a few days before actual next city council meeting, I'd like to verify it with the treasurer so that we can make sure that all of our lines match, please. Thank you, guys.
I, I would like to see this one table unless you guys want to make a vote on it.
I'm good with tabling it.
Councilman Sob, would you like to table, would you approve?
Sure, referring it back.
Further this back to administration. By Councilman Sob, Councilman Constan, will you second that?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, please to amend, to table this.
I refer back to administration, I'm sorry.
Second.
To get the updated numbers. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Wensel.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
No.
Robert Conston.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
Yes.
Mo Beidun.
Yes.
Motion carries.
By the way, I don't want you guys to think that we're not going to approve this. We just want to make sure that the numbers are accurate. That's all. Thank you. We want to make sure that we pay everybody. It's just, it's to be done the right way.
Next up is DPW Director Dancy, Wayne County CSO retention basin payment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Deveron Heights City Council approve the payment of the Wayne County CSO retention basin operations and maintenance payments for a total of 3,700, 7,786,062 cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or the clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number 592537927100 as outlined in 90.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. We missed you here, Councilwoman. Can we also set the record straight that Mrs.?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Family emergency sort of.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Emergency.
I've got to know more about this one. The retention basin.
Yes, retention basin. This was when Pelacca was here, the, the city and the former administration, before this administration made an agreement. Um, you want me to give you the detail on it?
Well, I know the, I mean, is this the, the retention basin? It says CSO also.
We owe the money. This is money we owe Wayne County for a retention basin that collects a bunch of stormwater and sanitary sewage, pumps it to the treatment facility. So like I said, this is before I was here, but this is money that the city does contractually owe the county. Your guys' special city council has all the details apparently, so.
Is this the one on 94 in Pelham or where is this?
I don't know the exact location of it. I think it's behind the Hype Center.
Unfortunately, no. So, so yes, the Council Chair is correct. An agreement was reached in 1994 and this guy was overseeing that. He wasn't even born yet, but he was. The, the TRB treatment retention basin was agreed to. So when you have CSOs combined sewer overflow, you have two options. You either retain them and, and treat them before you discharge, you know, dur, during rain event, or you separate. Back then, the county, the county manages the treatment for the entire Rouge Valley. So this is on the north side. And it took a while to try to fund it because it's a small facility. It's mostly underground and it is physically located, I found it with that woman, right behind Hype. So there is a red brick structure behind Hype facility. And so the agreement was to build and operate a retention basin for, to accommodate, to prevent a surge overflow into the Rouge River. And, and basically so intercept, it will retain the floodwater. And so now I do have a whole lot of questions about, because I did, I spent a lot of time on this file, tried to figure out who agreed to what and for how long. So we are, we did sign a contract that says basically we, we will pay the county for to operate, maintain and to man the facility and to treat on our behalf. As a matter of fact, the license to operate, the, the actual license, the, the Eagle license is in both Deveron Heights and Wayne County names. So we go every four years before Eagle and, and so that's why I had to learn quickly as to what happened. So apparently in that, in that contract, and I ran it by our attorney, it, it gave the city the option. So we entered into 19, in the contract in 1994, the county built it and operated it continuously and they still do today. It's still operated by Wayne County Environmental Group today. But in 19, for, 2014, 2014, the prior administration decided to investigate, taken over the facility and operate it ourselves as opposed to paying the county. And so the agreement calls for, and again, I'm going from memory now, it says that you need to give the county a two-year notice if you are going to take over. You could, you could terminate and take it over. We can still do that today. But the agreement is good until 34, 2034. So, and the, and the prior administration did as in fact pass a resolution by council to take over and hire, I believe, Wade Trimm to take over the operation. That agreement was passed by council. It was, it was signed by the prior mayor and, and everything, except it was never terminated and no one ever told the county that we're taking over and terminating. So as a result, we didn't take it over. The county continued to operate today and the, the, the contract is valid. However, the city stopped making payments. We met many times with the county and they, you know, they haven't, they fulfilled all their contractual obligation. As a matter of fact, every time it, it rains and, and the CSO is activated and we're doing treatment, they notify the city, they, they do everything the contract said to do. And, and for some reason, we stopped making payments.
Well, we, we, I'm sorry, we'll get to the point where because we're, we're doing the CSO work that we won't need that anymore?
So, so as, as I said earlier, the options are when you have combined sewers, like an older community like us, you can, you can do a retention basin and treat it in place and reduce it, or you can separate. That was the first one, the county said, let's treat in place and, and the city agreed to it in 1994. After that, all of our decisions are separate one time and you're done. So what I have now, we have six other CSO areas, right? So if you notice, in, in December, I brought back a finance plan and we're on number three. We just started number three on the south end on Beach Daily. So ideally, what I like to do as we go forward before 34 is to put a plan to separate and never enter into a new contract, but have a plan to separate it. Just get the storm separate from sanitary and you're done. But until 34, the contract is valid and they're doing the work.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I just also will say briefly, I, I had a conversation about this. I was verified this money was actually put in a restricted fund. So this money's been in a restricted fund for many years.
That's.
So this is not like hitting our GL, not coming from our, our fund balance or anything like that. Thank you. So it's, it's been there, so.
Thank you so much. Motion made by, any other discussion?
Council Chair, I just wanted to make a correction. Not the full amount is in a restricted account. Only 2.8 million is in a liability account, which happens at the end of the fiscal year. So really you would be paying a little bit from the water fund balance.
All right.
About a million 100. Sorry, a little bit less, a million 600.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is DPW Director Dancy, who is very popular today, utility building office security door installation.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Deveron Heights City Council approve the installation of the utility I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the installation of the utility building office door by Gandol Door for total cost not to exceed $2,336.25 to be paid from GL account number 592-536-931000 as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman, the Honorable Councilman Constance, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on this?
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
So this is for the Building and Water Department. So I have two questions on this. Number one, you put a door, security door, but the counter is wide open. It defeats the purpose. That's number one. Number two, I remember a few years back, CDBG came forward and said that there was money available to redo all the countertops for them to be ADA compliant. Where's that money?
Look, I will say, you know, that door is accessible for anybody to open.
I'm not disputing that, but it doesn't have to be a $2,500 door.
Counselor Chair.
If you could just reach right in from the counter and open the door.
Counselor Chair. I think until we can secure the countertop, it's useless to put a security door in when somebody can just go through the glass. It's not.
We could see the same about the Building Department.
The Building Department has a regular door.
They have a regular door and they have the thing that pulls it out.
This is a regular door.
No, this is a security door.
The Building Department's got, theirs is more secure, though. This glass was just put in during COVID. It's like temporary.
The Building Department actually has a door, just like the Engineering Office has a door.
Look, I think there's nothing wrong with adding the door. Individuals that are working in this department feel for the safety of their well-being, especially in times where rates are extremely high and people are complaining. Look, man, this could be a security, I mean, what are we waiting for? Somebody to come out here one day screaming and yelling and attacking one of the women inside that Water Department? Are we going to then be saying like, you voted no on something like this, and all eyes are pointing at us? I know it's a tough decision, guys, it's safety.
It's not a tough decision, it's just either do it right or don't do it all. I understand that, but this is the first step to doing it right. Why don't you just get a price on everything instead of a door? But then if you do the countertop and it's not ADA compliant, you're wasting more taxpayer money. But I remember CDBG.
See if the offer still stands.
Counselor Chair, hang on one second. I just want to say, and I'm going to leave it to you guys, to me, if somebody's calling, if it's going to cost the taxpayers $2,225 for the sake of security, to me, there's no cost of that. And I know, this is, you know, this is a back and forth, and look, let's adjust the elephant in the room, all right? Some of the council members go back there. I went back there. Councilman Saab has been back there.
I have not been back there.
I mean, regardless, they say, they said you've been back there.
I have not been back there.
I understand, I just said, they have said, councilman, I'm not saying you've been back there or not.
Well, they can say all they want, they're lying.
Okay, so that's where this is coming from, okay? This is not coming from, because it's been like this since 1963, or since it's been, for however long we've used that for City Hall. The truth is, the more I look at this, like, there's going to come a day where somebody's going to get very angry and storm through that door. And they're going to say, you guys denied us. Now, does that open up a liability against us?
Counselor Chair.
That's where I stand on this, but I'll hear from the rest of you guys.
Counselor Chair. Counselman. You know, I walked right back there once, about a month ago, and they said, councilman, please, you know, get permission to come back here. I said, okay, I'm sorry. But, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of the door, but maybe it should come to us with an entire package, the door and the glass. I mean, I'm all, I would probably vote no on just, yes on just the door right now, but I, you know, let's do the whole thing. I'm sure, I'm not sure if you need bulletproof glass, or just some kind of, you know, thick plexiglass that keep from jumping in there, or some spindles or something, you know? I mean, let's do it, let's do it the right way, all the way through. I mean, I'm ready to vote yes on the door, but I mean, I'd like to see the whole thing secured. Either block it off, because you don't need the whole thing wide open, you know, just put some drywall up there or something, and just some partial window or something, or...
I'm sure we can figure something, that could be the next phase.
I mean, I'm not against first-phase door, you know?
Any other discussion?
Is that the best price we got? Did we get three bids on that? Yeah?
Yeah, they're on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree with you for the safety of our people back there.
I like that, we got some agreements, you and I, for once, huh? How about that?
I totally agree. I have that in the front section.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Ma'am Clerk, please take this to roll call.
Tom Winsell?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
And Moby Do.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Six one.
I'd like to see them come back with a second phase to put more secure glass in there, because that still bothers me. Somebody really wants to get back there.
It would be cheaper to do a package than to do a door, do the glass. It'd make no sense to come back and pay more money.
You're right.
Next up is DPW Dancy, Cross Connection Control Program Contract Extension.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved, try this again, it doesn't, there's an error on it. Dearborn Heights City Council approved the extension of the contract with HydroCorp and operate the city's Cross Connection Control Program for an additional two years. In addition, authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in 9G.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Counselor Chair. Sir. What is the Cross Connection Control Program? Counselor, Councilman, can I ask you a question? You look at your back. I did, but I mean, I wasn't really clear.
You're right, so HydroCorp is a company that inspects and keeps track of any, across connections, any point in the drinking water system that non-drinkable water could get into it. So they inspect businesses, residential, for any situation. The state requires you to inspect, right, a certain number of businesses, a certain number of backflow preventers, where non-drinkable water could get into the drinkable system.
What's an example of that?
And typically, there's not, typically, there's just not enough staff or labor hours to fulfill all the requirements Eagle wants, to be able to keep everybody on schedule, keep notices going out, keep enforcement, fill out the reports every year that you're actively trying to prevent any non-drinkable water from getting into your drinkable system.
What would be an example of that?
A lot of, like, utility sinks, might have a hose that sticks down into something where there's cleaners involved. Theoretically, it's happened once or twice, it's very rare, but you know how the state will, one thing will happen, and then all the elected officials, everybody, like, we need to make sure everybody can't have this happen again. If you had a hose, like, in a solution somewhere, and there was a fire, or somebody was using a hydrant, or you had a drop in pressure, you could back siphon non-drinkable water into the drinking water. Theoretically, it could go into the water main, go into somebody else's house, who was then filling up their glass of water, and then have non-potable water in the system. So, a lot of times, irrigation systems typically could, if you have differences in pressure, that water that is non-potable could technically, theoretically, make it into the drinkable water system. So HydroCorp is just the main company that does these a lot, they have a big staff, so they go out and they check all of our commercial buildings. Residential, there's a little program that's set up. Most of the residential stuff's for, like, hose bibs, if you see, sometimes if you sell a house, you got to put the little vacuum breaker on your hose bib. It's happened, and usually it happens in mountainous regions, right? If you got houses on high elevation, they have their hose, they're filling up a swimming pool, an old swimming pool with a bunch of algae and insects and bird feces in it. Fire, it'll suck through that hose into the system, and then before you know it, neighbors are getting sick, so.
Yeah, I wasn't really clear what that was.
Yeah. Cross connections, any point that a non-drinkable water could get into your drinkable system, so.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, the DPW Director Dancy, purchase and payment of a water sewer-specific loader.
Counselor Chair.
I'm sorry. Ari Rose. The Honorable Councilwoman Breyer.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of a water sewer-specific loader via Sourcewell Contract Number 011-723-CNH for a cost of $204,518.37. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, treasurer to issue payment from account 592-537-981.000 as outlined in 9H.
Second. Motion made by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Constance. Any discussion on this?
Counselor Chair, just want to know which is this, what accounts is coming out of?
Water. Yeah, 592 is water.
Water?
Yeah. Yeah, 592 is always water.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have DPW Director Dancy, purchase and payment replacement building and maintenance tool vehicle.
Counselor Chair.
Counselman.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of a building and maintenance tool vehicle from Grunel Ford via MyDeal, contract number MA240000001193, for the cost of $69,620 to be paid as follows. $13,000 trade-in for the current out-of-service vehicle, $53,100 from GL account 101-265-98100, $1,000 from GL account 101-265-981500, $2,520 be amended and used in building and maintenance training budget. In addition, authorize the mayor and/or the comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payments outlined in 9I.
Second.
Motion made by the Honorable Councilman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. And I sound like Mr. McCaffrey. Any discussions?
Yeah, I just want to know where that GL account, $53,000, is coming out of.
That's the capital outlay for building maintenance. There was money in there, and then we took some from, for some reason, there was another capital outlay under $5,000 that had a little bit in it, and then we moved the rest from the training budget. Because we got employees that, we probably won't use all that training budget this fiscal year.
Thank you.
There's supposed to be balances with what's in that account? I know, it was supposed to, yeah, it was in the back office, we asked for it. I know that this is time-sensitive, and I get it.
Yeah, no, I don't know why you didn't finish reading.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Library Director, Director, I'm sorry, Library Director McCaffrey, Library Budget Amendment, fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendments to the library budget. Increase 738-818 contracts increased by $25,000, increases from negative $4,181 to $20,819. Item two is to increase 738-827 LTN contracts increased to $5,000, increases from $8,820 to $13,820. Item three is to increase 738-802 dues and members increased by $5,000, increases from $2,578 to $7,578. Item four, increase 738-745 utilities increased by $15,000, increases from negative $2,965 to $12,035. Total increase is negative $50,000. Or, is that negative $50,000, Director?
No, it's $50,000, that's just a dash.
Okay, just a dash, just a, okay, total increase is $50,000. Item five is to decrease 738-981 capital outlay by $10,000, decrease from $61,058 to $51,000 to $58. Next item is to decrease 738-707 part-time by $30,000, decrease from $201,528 to $171,528. Last item is to decrease 737-931, repair and maintenance by $10,000, decrease from $54,653 to $44,653, total decrease $50,000 as outlined in 9J.
Second.
Motion made by the Honorable Councilwoman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. And I want to thank Director McCaffrey again. I see that you constantly respect and honor us, and when we request for something, you really deliver. I really, really, really appreciate you for that, Director McCaffrey. Appreciate it. Counselor Chair, I mean, just so people don't realize, this is a complete wash, we're increasing by 50 and decreasing by 50, so it's like, you know, no, thanks, Director, thanks for making it easy on us.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Parks and Recreation Directors, Director Zaboznik. Mr. Z, Parks and Recreation Budget Amendment.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendment to the Parks and Recreation Budget as outlined in 9K from account 101-691-981.000, which is capital outlay, the current budget is zero, the requested amount is $63,075, that's also the amended budget and the remaining balance after amendment. From account 101-000-684... or dot 700, reimburse county parks, requested amount $44,624 is the amended budget and the remaining balance after amendment. And then from account 101-691-728.000, Supplies, current budget is $33,000, we are requesting a decrease of $18,451, making the amended budget $14,549, with the remaining balance after amendment of $12,044. The notes are promotion 24-341 and 44-624, that's the second one. That is from the 21-22 Wayne County reimbursement, which will cover part of the marquee expenses. The grant paperwork must be submitted in June.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Saab.
Number one is, there's no money to give. Number two, this sign says there's a lawsuit on it, so I'd refer this back to the administration.
Just to give you an update on the situation with the sign, the county has communicated with me, asking why this has not been completed. I explained a brief bit about the situation, because we don't want to lose, obviously, the entire grant money from the city, or from the county. So the county has asked if we want to try to get this reapproved again, this will be the third time.
Who are you speaking with? You remind me from the county.
I would have to look at the...
Was it Commissioner Keneza, because he's the one that gave us the money?
Right, it's, I can't really say, because I don't remember her name.
Well, why don't you let me know and CC me on an email with them?
Okay, I just, but what they want now is all the details, some details on the legal, they contacted the county's corporate council for advice on this. So they want the details from us, and then once they see that, they would like an amendment or a motion by the entire council that you want them to try to extend it again, which they'll look at and then bring back to the county commission.
Counselor Chair, in, Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. In relation to what Director Zaboznik and I have discussed, we have an offer we received today from the plaintiffs. I think we need to set a closed session as soon as possible to consider the settlement offer from the plaintiffs. And that will, I think, affect our vote in which we vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Sorry, with regard to the comment that there is no money, again, the budget amendment is where the money would be coming from. So we would be getting a reimbursement of $44,624 from the county, and the remaining funds would come from supplies, which are not being spent this fiscal year per Directors Zaboznik.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Ma'am Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Tom Winsell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Moby Do?
No.
Tie vote? Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director Zabinski.
Zaboznik.
Zaboznik, Zaboznik. I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't do it intentionally, I know you seem a little frustrated, but I promise you, I'm not doing it intentionally. Spirit Festival 2025 Beverage Sales.
Counselor Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of beer and wine from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission in the amount of $10,354 to be sold at the Spirit Festival June 6 through the 8. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from the 2024-2025 Parks and Rec Budget Account Number 101-691-728.000 as outlined in 9L.
Second. Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Okay. I see that we're purchasing about $10,354. Is that our, like, what we did in the past? We have, we have no records at all on the beverage sales. We have, there's absolutely, nothing exists. So we have, we have no idea. We worked with Westside Distributing, who do all the festivals, and they gave us the projected amount. It's totally no risk, whatever we don't sell, we get all of our money back. Okay, that's great, that's great, I didn't know that. Yeah, so we get all of our money back, whatever we don't sell, and they're giving us $1,500 sponsorship on top of that. Oh, that's great. So it's a good program, everything, safety-wise, 100%, you know, pre-mixed, everything's pre-mixed in cans, there's nothing that's being mixed. All of, everything's controlled, so we control everything, because it's all set by a separate beverage. All of our staff have been trained, are all certified now for all the alcohol management, we're bringing on additional people, so we run the alcohol area properly. It probably doesn't get any better than that, I can tell you. I've done 18 festivals, never a problem. I've done probably thousands of events for the city of Dearborn. Not a problem. My question was just the cost, I just wanted to make sure they had an offer. So if we were to sell everything, we would make approximately $20,000. Awesome, so we'd make half. Yeah. Okay. My next question is, and I know I emailed you, I want to bring it up here, but you put out the signs that say Summer Fest. Yes, I did. The, to get the signs all remade in this short time, I risked two things. I risked not getting the signs up on the street in a timely manner, which, without the signs, even if they are slightly wrong, the more street time they are, the more people are preparing for it. If I risk it another one or two weeks, I really feel like it wouldn't benefit us, especially when the cost to redo those signs is going to run about $4,000. And we want to look at, you know, a new, a new, better-looking sign for the future, and something that, you know, will be just, you know, more reusable. We shouldn't really be spending this much money every single year for signs. And there's a lot of collateral signs to go along with this, there's smaller signs, and we have sponsor signs, too, that are probably all incorrect also. Directors Z, I just want you to know, I appreciate and I respect you trying to be, like, fiscally responsible for us. Unanimously, this council voted to name the Back to Spirit Festival. I just want you to know, like, following those things, like, this council body has somewhat of a say here. So if seven council members are saying that there's a resolution now that is called Back
Back to Spirit Festival, we should be honoring that.
Mm-hmm.
Regardless of the signs cost four thousand dollars. That's just my opinion. Counsel Chair?
Yes.
Maybe we can get, you know, I, I'm sure it's pretty cheap to get a, a sticker that says Spirit and then stick it on hold right over summer.
Yeah, cause it says twenty-four.
We actually have the machine that will do that now. We didn't have it ready in time. MIS had some problems looking at the computer to our, our system and getting it to work. It took, uh, well, it just took, it took about a week and a half. It just was start, they just, it just started working on Friday, so we have the ability to do that now. And so we can put, you know, a, a patch on it.
It says twenty-twenty-four, by the way. It doesn't say twenty-twenty.
Yes, yes, yeah.
You know, and also, you know, put it like on an angle where you're, you're deliberately changing your name, so everybody knows you're not trying to just cover everything up, make it look like, hey, the name has changed from Summer to Spirit.
And that was my, my thought also, uh, that we, we can correct that that way. Um, we just wanted to get them up and get the word out. All of our collateral, uh, advertising, Facebook ads, everything, all has new, all the new information. We had to change a lot of contracts to say Spirit in it, so it's been a little bit of a process.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Police Department Overtime Budget Amendment.
No.
No.
Nine M. Oh, Parks and Recreation Directors, Spirit Festival twenty-twenty-five Express Summary.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the expense summary budget for the two thousand twenty-five Spirit Festival in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-seventy-six cents. The Spirit Festival is found, is funded out of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Parks and Recreation Budget one-oh-one-six-nine-one-eight-nine-one-zero-zero-zero is outlined in nine N.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Police Chief Hart, Police Department Overtime Budget Amendment.
Hart?
How about Hadar?
Man, guys, I'm sorry. Hadar. Please forgive me.
Getting tired, huh?
Police Chief Hadar. It's, it's, it's actually hot in here. It's really, really muggy in here. Director Nancy, where's he at? Is that me seeing him? We're gonna work together, though.
Over time.
I think... All right, can we get him?
I think he went around.
I have the motion read.
He has one walking in front of us. Bye. I, I don't even end the motion read here.
Counsel, should I read it? I don't know. Probably want it read.
If I can't get a motion here, it's gonna be dead on arrival. Alrighty. All right, dead on arrival.
Hmm.
Sorry, Chief.
Can we refer it back?
No.
Next up is Police Chief Hadar, Police Department Auto Auction.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the auction of the following police vehicle, department vehicles by J.T. Quavo. Two thousand twenty-four Ford, two thousand four Ford, four-door.
You don't gotta give the VIN number. Do they have to give the VIN number on here? I don't think so.
Nineteen ninety-eight Chevy pickup truck, two thousand three Ford Tourist, two thousand ten Ford Escape, nineteen ninety-nine Cadillac Seville. The money will go into the street forfeiture account, is outlined in nine O.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Police Chief Hadar, purchase and payment of two de-escalation simulator.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and the payment of Milo Range Theater one-hundred-and-eighty interactive judgment and de-escalation simulator for the amount of ninety-two thousand, six-hundred-and-two dollars and seventy-five cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign a necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one-oh-one-three-zero-zero-nine-six-two-zero-zero-zero is outlined in nine P.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Counsel, uh, Chief, uh, what account is this coming out of?
It says a quote purchase, it's coming out of the account one-oh-one-three-hundred-nine-six-two-point-zero-zero, which is state money that M. Coles has granted us.
Okay. M. Coles, thank you.
Any discussion?
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
I'm really interested in this, uh, I've always been a fan of de-escalation in, in public and at home, everywhere, everywhere. I mean, what exactly is this? Is it a, a video simulator?
Yes. Yes. And we use it for, uh, training for active shooters, barricaded gunmen, use-of-force situations, de-escalations and things like that. It's, uh, it'll give you like a real scenario, live scenario. You're armed with a simulator weapon and you go to, uh, like real live police runs.
What about like a, 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 a traffic stop?
We have those also.
They're being, they're included?
Yes. Yes.
Then how about just like in, dealing with a, uh, um, like a, a, say homeless person on the street?
Correct. There's a simulator that has a scenario with a homeless person at a park, that's at a bench, sleeping overnight, that's armed.
Awesome.
Yes.
Good. Okay, yeah, good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, why don't you go? They can use you as a trainee if you want.
Any other discussion? We'll, we'll bring him in first.
Yeah, yeah. No, you won't.
Yeah. Any other questions? De-escalation. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Police Chief Hadar, purchase and payment of vector scheduling software.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of vector scheduling software for the police department for a total of twenty thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars for a three-year period. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller or the clerk to sign a necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one-oh-one-three-hundred-eight-one-eight-zero-zero-zero is outlined in nine Q.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Yes, Counsel Chair, I actually spoke to Lieutenant, Sergeant Shugs about this. This is actually, will replace, uh, our Code Red. It's actually half the price and it offers a lot more features, scheduling and all that. So it's actually way cheaper. We pay eleven thousand dollars a year for Code Red. This is half the price.
Hmm. Any other discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, petition from citizen, zero, and then ordinance and resolution, Mayor Bill Bazey, Downriver Utility Waste Authority, DUA, amend articles of incorporation resolution.
Counsel Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution regarding the Downriver Utility Waste Water Authority, known as DUA, amended articles of incorporation and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution on behalf of the city is outlined in eleven A.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Excuse me?
No.
Okay. Clerk, take it to roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Henshaw?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Mobey Dun?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Which is, I want to vote no with Councilman.
Five-one.
Next up is Councilman Sob, extension of the resolution establishing a twelve-month application stay.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the extension of the resolution establishing a twelve-month stay and the application stays outlined in eleven D.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Counsel Chair?
Yep, Roger.
Um, I believe that, I opposed it last, last one, last year when it was brought up, but I think it needs to go to the planning commission first. But we do have our ordinance H-twenty-three-dash-oh-three, which is the Gateway Overlay District. Um, from what I read, it's section thirty-six-sixty-four, in, the Taylor Dearborn Heights Gateway Overlay District was intended to create a uniform set of land use regulations along the Taylor, Dearborn Heights border to help develop both communities. Um, it was for twenty years. We signed and approved it, I believe, but under section thirty-six-ninety-three, the table of permitted uses, we have in there automobile dealerships, we have in there car washes, we have in there approved by us, um...
Thank you.
Junkyards, scrap yards, and motor vehicle towing, outdoor storage of materials or equipment. So we've approved this already, it's an ordinance. I don't think we could change the ordinance for the resolution, but I think it should probably be tabled and brought to the planning commission.
Thank you. This is just the second time we'd be going for this renewal. We have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Roger. Next up is temporary food truck, cart license renewal application for Hot Wheels Grill.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, cart license renewal application for Hot Wheels Grill is outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, any discussion? I will say, I had this food truck, believe it or not, I was on a bike ride with a resident. Pulled in, we were hungry, we stopped. Not that, I won't say it out loud, it was Angelo Venegas. And, uh, we stopped on our bikes and we ate, we ate there. It was really good. And so I know now that they're, they're, they're also going to potentially be moving their location, uh, and that's what this is. So they've already had their renewal with us, they're just coming back for us, and I respect them for that. I thank them for saying, hey, I'm, I want to move my location, if that's okay with you guys, um, because the area I'm not in is, is probably not doing the best, and so I want to see if I want to give it another opportunity. So I respect them for that very much. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have temporary food truck, cart license renewal application for Catria Mia.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, cart license renewal application for Catria Mia. Catria Mia is outlined in thirteen B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I will say something. This is probably the best food truck I've ever had in my entire life. This is the best authentic Mexican food I've ever eaten. Uh, but she's from Venezuela, but she speaks very, very good, uh, Spanish. It is unbelievable.
They are Spanish.
It is really is Spanish.
Venezuelans are Spanish.
Do they?
Speak Spanish.
Spanish. All right. Please forgive my...
He didn't do good in geography.
All right. But yeah, really, if you have not gone and tried this, I think it's, what have they been open for three years now? It's very, very, very good. Yes. You know what?
Uh, Hassan Telegraph, the gas station.
Yep.
Across the street from Mike's, uh...
You know, Vince, I think you owe me lunch.
Me too.
Yeah, I think you owe me lunch, and it's not cheap there. Any other discussion?
It's not cheap there.
Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have everybody's favorite, Antonio's.
Counsel Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Antonio's Cusina Italiano at two-six-three-five-six-four, is outlined in thirteen C.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
I was just sitting there, everything was really clean, restroom was really clean, uh, floor, I peeked back into the kitchen area, everything's clean, people had the gloves on and it was, it reached my approval for license renewal.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, I'm still waiting for you to go to the gallery, but thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Before we move forward, I, I, Mahdi, if you can step up real quick. What line item is this? It was for the budget amendment.
Yes.
Um, I just want to let you guys know that Mahdi actually let me know that was the only clerical error that he made in that budget amendment. So if you guys wanted to go back, be able to pay those individuals, I'm okay with that, but that's up, that's up to the bodies, if you guys want to do that.
Yeah.
I know we tabled it because we wanted the bright information. He went back to the office, reviewed it.
It's only forty thousand dollars for that line items that we can mark off and adjust. So it starts at forty, minus fifty, and it would be twenty-five.
Uh, then of course, am I allowed, are we allowed to go back?
Sure.
Okay, and that was, um, what is it?
Suspend the rules. Suspend the rules. Yeah, suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules and then...
Okay, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Counsel Chair, put a motion to suspend the rules.
Councilman Sob, seconded, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Madam Clerk, what's that line item?
I don't know what I'm looking for.
It was before nine K.
There she comes.
Mariana has it.
It was, uh, nine D.
Yeah, yes, comptroller's office, yeah.
It's the fourth item on the table.
It's the fourth item on the table, it's one, city-owned property, one oh one, two hundred, nine forty-nine.
Line item ninety.
Ninety.
Ninety, yes, item ninety, and the amended line is the fourth item on the decrease accounts.
It's okay. Council, you want to go to read the, because you read it first.
Yeah, Council Chair, I put a motion that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the budget amendment necessary to cover the upcoming payments, as outlined in nine D, with the direction of item, line item number four.
Yup.
And that was forty thousand.
Yes, forty thousand, as the current budget, the amended amount would be fifteen, then the new amended budget would be twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand, thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Breyer. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Council Chair, can I ask Mahdi to give us a corrected version so we can put it online?
I'll put it, I'll give you a corrected version, I want to get back to the office right now.
Council Chair, real quick, how many vendors are, does this involve?
How many vendors? I don't have the exact list, but the treasurer has a list that she can provide to you, and I can let her know to give you that list. Majority, majority of the payments are building maintenance repair items and truck repairs that the building maintenance needs, and then we have a few contractual services for the council department. That's, that's where the majority comes from.
Thank you, Mahdi, appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate you going back and fixing that.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, Mahdi is one of the hardest workers in the city, honest to God, I see him here on Sundays.
Yeah.
Parked working here.
Thank you. Next up is business license renewal, Applebee's.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I'd like to refer, I'd just like to refer this back to administration.
Okay. Okay. You want to refer this back to administration?
To Corporation Council.
Particularly to Corporation Council. Okay, motion to refer this back to our Corporation Council, motion made by Councilman Sob, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
For what?
Wait, what are we referring back?
Uh, Applebee's is a license, the clerk, I'd like you to speak on it.
Yeah, they had a deficiency for their annual liquor license review, and I'm not sure if Corporation Council got back to you as it was requested when we reviewed that in March. It was supposed to get back with you in thirty days, on those businesses that had a deficiency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, deficiency on their liquor license, what does that mean?
During the review, that means that the departments, you know, building, police, fire, they all did a, you know, a review of the business, and Applebee's had a deficiency, and we requested Corporation Council to prepare a letter or give us some type of direction on what it was.
Council Chair, I didn't prepare a letter, but if, if it's something, maybe you can just reiterate what the, I'll look at the deficiency again, and then we can send them a notice. The Liquor Commission will also notify them, I don't know if they've gotten in contact with you, Madam Clerk, if they fixed whatever the issue was.
No, the, the motion was Corporation Council that, to receive, notify the liquor review and direct Corporation Council to contact and/or draft a letter to businesses with a deficiency, which this was one, if the department that cited the deficiency has not already done so, requesting the deficiency be addressed within thirty days of said letter, and to provide an update to City Council, that's why I asked if City Council had received that, and they haven't, you're welcome.
Thank you. So refer this back to Corporation Council by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Carrero's Business License Renewal.
Council Chair.
Yup, Councilman.
I'm over at Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the business license renewal for Carrero's Italiana sixty-five sixty-five North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen E.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Went by there, and I actually did, you know, there were some, there were some situations with adjoining business, you know, next to parking lot, I mean, I looked there, that was resolved, it wasn't their fault, but I went around the back, and it was pretty, you know, really clean around the back of that place, I was surprised how clean they kept there, and inside was really nice, and the waitstaff was really pleasant.
Thank you.
They've been clean for years.
Yeah, they're clean, real clean operation.
Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, again, thank you, Councilman Wenzel, for continuing your efforts and making sure that these businesses are up to code, and I mean that, I really do.
Well, I enjoy doing it.
Good job. Uh, next up.
I get free meals, no I don't.
Next up is business license renewal, Fairlane Eagle.
Council Chair.
Three eight, six one.
Council Chair, I'm over at Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the business license renewal for Fairlane Eagles number thirty-eight sixty-one at two zero seven three eight Van Born, as outlined in thirteen F.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yup.
I was in there, and they're doing some, continually doing work, and my hat goes off to the auxiliary portion of the Eagles, the women there take care of that, that building immaculate, everything's really clean in there, and also, I like to, my hat goes off to the Fairlane Eagles, thirty-eight sixty-one, they allowed my nonprofit Jamie's kids to work along with them and adopt the highway, we adopted the highway cleaning from, on Telegraph Road from Van Born to Michigan Avenue, and a couple weeks ago, we did a cleanup program through M.D.O.T., where you go out there with volunteers, you clean up the median and bag it all up, and M.D.O.T. comes following Monday to pick it up, they're, they contribute to the community, they sponsor things, all kinds of things in the community, and then they do this cleanup program also with M.D.O.T., adopt the highway.
Thank you. Good man, and I saw, I know the work efforts that you and Jamie's kids and the volunteers did, you, thanks, my hat goes out to you and your family and everything that you guys have done also.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, renewal license, business license renewal, Happy Wealthy one sixty-eight LLC.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
With the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the business license renewal for Happy Wealthy six, one sixty-eight LLC at fifty-six eighty North Telegraph, as outlined in thirteen G.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion, Councilman Wenzel?
Council Chair, I, I failed to get to this business, so I rely, relying on our directors to tell us that there's any problems there.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
What type of business is this, I'm just curious? Happy Wealthy? Okay, alright.
Is it yours?
No.
Ford Telegraph. Ford and Telegraph.
What is it?
Restaurant?
Yes.
It's the restaurant by, by the GFS.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think it's the old Rose Garden.
I'm going there tomorrow. We table this.
You still gotta go to the gallery. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is members of the public, and we're going to take comments from Councilman. Go ahead, Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, just, all I want to do is repeat what I said earlier, thanks for everyone that helped out with our Family Fun Night this past weekend, and I'm promoting the Dearborn Heights Watershed Stewart Commission Rain Garden Maintenance and Ecorse Creek Cleanup Project this Saturday, May seventeenth, nine AM to twelve noon, at the Richard A. Young Center at fifty-four hundred McKinley Street, Dearborn Heights, four eight one two five. It's a great family fun activity, weeding, planting, raking, spreading mulch, we did run into a little bit of problem with the city sponsoring our mulch, but we're working on that, I'm working with several different departments to see if we can get the mulch paid for, but I hope everyone shows up, it's a great time, we have.
I'll pay for it.
There you go, he's got money.
I'll pay for it.
Well, it's, it's, I called around, and I went through, I used every connection, I found different businesses, the District Seven, the school district works with the company Carefree Landscaping, their supply yard on Trenton, and they gave me a price because of our situation, that's like one-third of the normal price, and the price for the mulch is for the twenty-five yards, I believe it is, is five hundred dollars.
I'll pay for it.
Well, that's great. Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you, Councilman Sob, thank you, God bless you.
As long as the chief comes, that helps. So you caught her?
Saturday, this Saturday, May seventeenth.
I would love to, but this week is Police Week.
He'll be there.
Yeah, the, you know, this, we've had the Fire Department, Police Department there every year, and, you know, the members volunteering there every year, and what we do.
And the clerk and the council members.
Yup.
And the treasurer.
Our biggest, the biggest job, you know, we get the kids out there, and they're pulling all the weeds and doing all sorts, the biggest job is hauling twenty-five yards of mulch in wheelbarrow at a time into position, and that's a, it's a good workout. Anybody want to skip the gym that day, show up?
You need a wheelbarrow, I got an extra one from council.
Bring it.
No, he doesn't. He hasn't returned it.
Any other discussion?
It's important we get that mulch down, to keep the weeds down on the.
Yeah.
Water from the roof of the building drains into those flower ponds.
Three areas.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for people that know, a rain garden, in this particular case, there are two massive rain gardens, they were built about twelve years ago, and all the rainwater, instead of going down into the storm drain, adding to the flooding problem, the rainwater goes into these rain gardens, which are made up of native, native Michigan plants with massive root systems and high transparency, transparency is where the water evaporates through the leaves, and it keeps all the water out of the storm system, and at the Richard A. Young Center also, there's a special parking lot that was built at the same time, it doesn't, it's got one drain for overflow, but all the water that this parking lot gets rained on, goes right through the parking lot into the ground, doesn't, doesn't go into the storm system at all.
Councilman, be honest, we had the bust area last year.
You guys, you guys are the best area.
Thank you.
This is the cleanest.
Always putting out for handouts.
We have the melt pods there for the.
It's fun, it's a fun project, it's a nice photo opportunity too, because it's so beautiful, the scenery, the grand, the plants and trees and stuff, and go there, take, take your family, take some pictures, take some campaign pictures there, it'd be great, you know.
The chief is going to come with some cadets, and they're going to have their own crew.
He, he came through for us a Family Fun Night, you know, he came through with cadets.
Councilman, in charge of my schedule, so I'll see you there, right?
I guess Roger volunteered too right now, so.
Yup, thank you.
Right, and I'll be there as usual.
Alright guys, let's go on next, please, thank you. Anyone else want to give comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
Just want to say, you know, happy National Police Week to our police officers, you know, honestly, I did a ride along with them, they're so overworked and so underpaid, and I'll say that every time I can, and hopefully with everything, we're getting, we're going to have, you know, a world-class police department, one of the best departments in the nation in the years to come, I'll say that, and then, you know, please cut your lawns.
Yeah.
Cut your lawns, please. Cut your weeds, cut your lawns.
Yeah, they need it.
I mean, some of these houses look ridiculous. Director, please issue as many tickets as you possibly can, two, three times a week to the same house if possible. Also, please tell your kids to slow down.
Oh, yeah.
Our neighborhoods are just, they're dragways, you know, we can't have every police officer on every road, well, please, tell your kids it starts at home, tell your kids to slow down. You know, instead of them driving, help them cut the lawns, clean in front of the house, honestly, they're going to kill somebody, or they're going to kill themselves, so that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other council members? This is, this is not announcements, this is comments from council.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to, want to thank our police officers, a Police Officer Week, please, everyone slow down, you know, our streets are narrow, cars are parked, if a child darts out, we all know what happened to Joey Smith at Pardee in Annapolis, and we don't want to repeat that tragedy, so, the weather's beautiful, a lot of people outside, please drive carefully.
Thank you. I will briefly just touch up on a couple of things, one is, we miss Councilman Ahmad, this meeting was a little different without him, and I wish he was with us, but he is enjoying a cruise with his family, and he asked me to give his sincere's and tell you guys that he missed being here at this meeting today. Secondly is, we're going to talk about reckless driving, I've been doing a lot of door knocking, and I swear to you, I was so scared from this loud muffler that was going so fast, and all I could think about, like, if there was a dog running, because it might, you know, like, my dog sometimes runs out of the house, and I chase it, I'm not looking left and right, and if I come out of nowhere, and that car cannot stop, it's killing me, and it was so loud and big and fast, and I just kept thinking to myself, like, why did we get here, how did we get here? The truth is, Chief, like, I know that we know, we have different units, we need to figure out how to have a traffic unit back in the city of Dearborn Heights, and not, oh, well, this is where we're at, and we're short-staffed, no, man, like, that means we need to take everybody in the police department, put them back out on the roads, put everybody back on the roads, I mean, you might get grievance, but look, the good news is, what do we get to our residents? We're going to get grievance? I mean, like, we need to figure this out, and if that means we have to put traffic back out on the roads, put traffic back on the roads, we have to figure it out, and I don't mean our major roads, I mean our neighborhoods, on a Saturday, I should see cops in all the neighborhoods, maybe that's just like wishful thinking, but I would love that. Yes, I agree, with our TSP program, we've been moving our officers around throughout the city to target enforcement through the neighborhoods, I mean, for example, right now, you got one of the best officers on the department who issues a lot of tickets sitting over there in that corner, okay? So. So you can send her back on the roads? She's here to protect you guys, but when she goes out there, she gets it in, and if you drive on Ford Road, and you don't, you don't have insurance, or you're driving reckless, I guarantee you, she's going to tow your car. Can you promise me we're going to have at least five cars towed tonight? If they're reckless driving? So, we're trying, and we, we, we plan on doing something next week in a neighborhood with our TSP, for example, we're going to put some spotters out there, and then we're going to do some traffic enforcement. Thank you so much, Chief. So, we're trying, I mean, the TSP, we can, like you said, if you identify an area where it needs, needs to be addressed, we can shift our focus there. Thank you so much, Chief, and then also, I want to say, like, like many of you here, we want our fire station to be up and running, and the plans to happen, but the truth is, like, in ten years, I plan on still being here, and I don't want to look back and say, well, I voted and I pushed it to the golf course, when just three years ago, I promised everybody, including Councilman Wenzel, you're not going to get anything built on this golf course while I'm on council, and you know what, like, seeing that this administration's kind of pushing us onto it, really scared me, you know, it was, that actually really bothered me, and so, do we need to put forward something onto the ballot where it says, let the residents decide if somebody wants to go out, or do we got to put a resolution forward for that sake? I mean, the truth is, tonight, four people would have voted yes, you'd have, you'd have somebody built on there, and, and everything we promised and said we weren't going to do was going to happen, and that's, that's alarming to me, it really is, because like, it's a Don Ross Golf Course, we said we want to see thirty-six holes, we went through RF, you know, RFPs, and we're going to make this place the, you know, destination, golf courses, and it is right now, but it's going to get bigger and better, I think I spoke to Jason, and he said they've been so busy, who knows, maybe we can open up another nine, and eventually, who knows, in ten years, open up another nine, we can't, we can't, we really can't, I, I don't think the solution is to go ahead and build on the golf course, that's, I'm a hard no on that, and, and I'm going to stay a hard no, and really, my fear is not just because I said I wasn't going to build on the golf course, but my fear is this, I have to start sinking. Who's going to say anything? Twenty years, who's going to come back? They're going to fight for the same issue, no. Next thing up is, you know, I thank DPW Director and the staff in DPW, because they've been working with no overtime, zero overtime, and they're still kind of trying to do their best, they're putting their best foot forward, some of these roads are just so hard, like I, I drove the other day, and my car just like, like a thunder, I couldn't keep hold of my, my, and I was going twenty miles per hour, I couldn't keep hold of my steering wheel, it was so, and it was on Annapolis Street, on the corner of Annapolis, and on the corner of Annapolis and Southfield, right there, runs into Cornell and Annapolis, it's like a triangle, and my car just went boom, 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 I think I sent it to you, Mr. Deep.
That's the point.
It's insane, and so I really wish we can get that really resolved, our roads are very, very ugly, I know that we have limited funds, I know that, you know, some of the roads, like our major roads, are taking up a lot of the funding, but on our local roads, I know we have local funding, you know, major funding and local funding, let's be able to, let's capitalize on a lot of those, and it's, and I think it really goes back down to maintenance, we didn't maintain these certain potholes over the last year or two, and they went from this to this, we got to do better, and if, there's no way this road broke up the way it broke up in the last two years, we're failing on that, and I don't mean to point fingers and blame anybody, but we got to do better, that's, that's really all I got for here. Any other council? Councilwoman.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on you, how you're saying that we need to start enforcing the speeders, but the bottom line is, you can give out as many tickets as you want, once it gets to court, we got to have the courts get on board too and enforce them.
Quickly.
I mean, because if, if you're wasting your time writing tickets, that's doing nobody good, if the courts are just letting people go, also too, I like the idea of impounding the cars, and I'd like to see some kind of schedule where, you know, first time it's impounded, of course, the owner on title has to come get the car, second time, maybe keep it like a three-day waiting period, so, you know, every time, if they keep getting caught, keep it for a longer amount of time, until it gets to the point, it's an inconvenience to them, if it's the same car, and same driver.
Well, I think it's also an inconvenience when you are impounding it, but we have to be careful on like the illegal search and seizures, like, we can't seize a vehicle based on somebody's crime rate unless a court is actually made, you know, issuing out that warrant, but I think even when you do impound it, spending that, I don't care what court does, the extra five hundred dollars to go get your vehicle out, and the inconvenience, they're going to think twice recklessly driving in our city.
If we save one life doing that, it's worth it.
So we, we do have Wayne County scheduled to come in and train our officers on how to forfeit vehicles for drag racing and reckless driving, so that is in, is in the process of happening.
Perfect, thank you so much.
And when that happens, with the drag racing, they've got to pay a percentage value of the vehicle to get it back, they got to pay towing and storage, so if it's a twenty, thirty thousand, they usually take, when we were doing it, we'd do like five thousand, seven thousand, get your car back.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I like that.
Where's that money go?
Our pocket.
Any other comments? See, now we're going to go to announcements.
Council Chair.
Okay.
Just one question, Roger.
Yes.
You said that, where would that money go, would it go to the courts or go back to the city?
Well, when the prosecutor, the prosecutor's office has the authority to do that with the forfeiture, so they would get a percentage, the, the city would get a percentage of it.
The city?
Right, you know.
That'd help us with our budget, you know, our best of money.
I wasn't kidding when I said we seized twenty thousand cars, prosecutor's office got four million.
Get out there.
We need to put them at de-escalation.
We're going to go to announcements to Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay, and one more comment too. We had a nice, the second time affair. Lynn, Lynn was there. On Saturday, we had the people who have lost children. And it was put on at Yeah, OW Best. Turnout wasn't great, but it took two hankies to get through five ladies talking about family members' children. And it was very well done. And the ladies from D7 did a, did a great job. Lynn was there. And our treasurer and myself. And it was a great turnout. It was very nice on their part. And they made a nice brunch for everybody too. It was beneficial. Now to comments?
Yep.
Or to announcements? Okay, the important one is May 22nd, which is a Thursday, 7:00 PM. The South Dearborn Heights Civic Association will be hosting speakers that are state reps at 7 o'clock PM. That's, that's Lynn. And we should have Sri come as well, or someone from his office that will talk to us about what's happening that applies to our area here. So, you'll be free to ask them all kinds of questions. So, please attend. We need a good audience for our state reps. At 3335 South Beach Daily.
Thank you.
And then we have on Wednesday, the 28th, because the days don't fall the same. The Ecorse Creek has their meeting at 6:00 PM, same location. And then there's one other thing that Mr. Zaboznick can give us details on. They still have tickets for that lantern thing at the zoo in Grand Rapids. If people are interested. It's a three-hour trip each way, but we're gonna make some special stops and play bingo and the time will pass. And it'll go into the evening and to see the lanterns at night should be very nice. So, get with either one of the senior senators, buy those tickets and let's have a good time.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the administration? Yep, right.
It's gonna be real quick. Two days ago, it was a very special person's birthday. So, I think we all should wish her a happy birthday. We never see her, she's always behind the camera or behind the wall. It was Angela's birthday.
Happy birthday, Angela.
How you doing, sir?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanna talk about a couple of items. First off, this Saturday, all day at JFK Library, we will be honoring staff and volunteers that passed while in service of the city. Over the years, we have had some very good people work with us in bringing literacy and community spirit. We will be sharing and having discussions around 1:00 PM. Light snacks will be served, so please come out and join us. Also, coming later on, Saturday, June 21st, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, is our summer reading kickoff. Join us to see ventriloquist Richard Paul at 11:00 AM and the Reptarium Interactive Zoo at 2:00 PM. This is going to kick off about six weeks of action-packed programming. You got a lot coming up during the summer reading. The program is welcome to all ages, so come on out. Thank you. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you so much. Alright, announcements from the administration. Seeing another, we'll open up to public comments. Go ahead, ma'am. How you doing? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got three minutes.
I'm Renee Myrna. I live in Annapolis. And what else did you ask me? I have, lost track. I'm sleepy. It's warm in here, I'm telling you. It's like
Thanks, Director Dancy.
I have a, I have quite a few notes that I wrote. But this has been a very interesting meeting. So, I'm gonna start with Tom. So, I'll, I'll give you an easy one. The citizens, like, do you still have that volunteer organization where somebody can volunteer? Do they need grass cutting, weeding, something like that?
Labor, labor?
Yeah. I need to get in touch with you so I can do some weeding and some grass cutting and stuff. Okay, Spirit Festival, thanks for addressing that, cause I saw the sign on Telegraph today. But I'm one of those people that have to see the sign weeks in advance and remind me every day then I show up if I remember it's there. So, good job on that. Couple of things that, that I was interested in, the, I better start with the easy one. Okay, paid tuition. I believe that our company has paid tuition, but if you, but you have to be there five years after. You know, you have, there's a time that you have to be vested in the company, or you have to pay it all back. So, that might be an idea. Auto pen. Whose signature? Whose signature was on that paper? That was the big question of, did the mayor sign this paper? Was it an auto pen? Did somebody sign for him? That was, that was pretty good. It's good to investigate that and hopefully somebody will follow through with that to find out if it was a legitimate signature on that page. Also, real estate money. Where's the real estate money? We signed a contract with the real estate companies. Is that not part of the budget or any of that kinda stuff?
We never signed one.
We didn't?
Oh, you, we didn't? Okay, well. Okay, that was the answer to that question. So, door, what about moving the water department to a different area that has a door or something? Like, I just noticed that the animal, animal control ordinance place moved, so what if they go over there? Instead of buying a door?
Not big enough.
Okay, so, and then, the, oh, here's, I'll save the big one for last. But, so Carreras, so I noticed that, that they got their license like renewed real quick, boom, boom, boom. And I'm wondering whatever happened to the sewer study? Like, who put the, who put the grease in the sewer, you know? And it's like, the other guy that tried to get his license renewed got all kinds of like backlog. And because of a sewer, it's being blamed for grease in the sewer. But then Carreras, which is right next door to them, nobody told us what is the result of the sewer study? Did they, did, who's, like, what kinda grease is in there? So, anyway, just, just to note that how that one got passed really quick, but the other poor guy was like penalized for a long time.
Council Chair, the Carreras, they weren't involved in the, the grease issue. It was, it was a neighboring business.
Right, but what I'm saying is that they're next door, so that sewer could be either one of them because they're sharing the same sewer. That's what I'm
What she's saying is, it could've been Carrera that was doing it.
Right.
But you didn't question Carrera, we questioned the other company, what she's saying.
Correct.
Council Chair?
There was video footage showing who actually poured it in. It wasn't Carreras. And there is a thing through Wayne County that you can FOIA, which I did. And you will find the results. I just don't wanna say here.
Okay, because that's what I, I had asked for previous ones, like, where's the, the final, where's the proof of who put the, the stuff down?
Council Chair, may I respond to her?
Go ahead.
The, we put an ordinance together, cause I've talked with the plumbing inspector from Dearborn Heights and as well as other cities. And we put a fats, oils and grease in response to what Ms. Councilwoman Maxwell pointed out, which Dearborn is doing, a lot of the new business coming into the city is requiring to keep a record of the grease and everything else, so this doesn't happen. So, it is a proactive step that we have to look at, the ordinance, but we've put it together, which will give, like, Tom, when he said he goes into restaurants, when you go in, you'll see a logbook every week. They track what the grease and what's being done in each restaurant. Which will prevent us being dumping into the system.
And it, and the only reason I ask is because when I first started with the city council, that was one of the first issues that I, that I came across, cause I was a novice for city council. And Vergari was, you know, they were right up front and center for a, of license renewal. And that's what the first controversy was. So, it just kept sticking in my mind that I never heard what was the final thing. And, let's see, what was the last thing? Oh, the fire station, last thing. So, two words, eminent domain. Pick a property, take over the houses. Just build it there. Eminent domain, I say do it. They did it to my grandma in the south end of Dearborn. She loved it. She moved to a better house in Dearborn, east Dearborn. I say eminent domain. That's it. Thank you very much. Hey, good job, you guys.
Thank you. Have a great day. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Hi, everybody. Sue Kaminsky, Amboy, Dearborn Heights. Few things. First off, thank you, Council, Mo and Tom in particular, for keeping your word about not building on the golf course. We had asked for a restriction and couldn't get anything put in writing. I'm part of Golfie Manor Civic Association. It's the oldest civic association that's active in the state of Michigan. And it's 502 homes. We don't publicize a lot. We have a meeting once a month on Monday night via Zoom. We have a newsletter that goes door to door six times a year. It's a very active civic association that does a lot of activities. We just had a Ucr Night. We do things for the kids. So, it, it matters to us because if there was building there, we would potentially have flooding. And frankly, I think that the city, if they were thinking about putting something there, their due diligence would've been to get an independent, not Wade trim, water engineer to look at the feasibility. It wasn't done. Shame on you. Sorry. The other thing is, thank you to the police officer, and I can't remember your name. I think, is it Simpkins?
Anthony.
Shoker. Oh, it wasn't you Friday. Who was at the accident? I thought it was her and it wasn't. Anyways, the other thing is, I hope Bill Bosse is a better ambassador to the Tunisians than he's been to the residents of Dearborn Heights. Think it's kinda funny that he's gonna be an ambassador. An ambassador represents people and bridges a gap. And he's failed to do that here. On a personal note, I hope President Trump doesn't get into that because we might be stuck with him longer. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Alright, anyone else in the audience? I need Councilman to back to do this. Alright, how you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. First thing, I wanna thank the police officers for being Police Week. And thank you very much for everything you do. Next week is EMS Week, so I'd like to thank our fire department who are paramedics. Thank EMTs and paramedics next week. Next week is EMS Week. So, she stole my thunder. I was gonna talk about classes for the department heads like we were talking about earl, earlier. And my suggestion was, you can do a resolution. You can have a next agenda that if you pay for somebody's schooling and they leave within three to five years, they have to pay it all back. Real simple to do. It can just clean up. That way, we can retain employees. They don't stay here, get a degree, then move to other spots.
Thank you.
And one more thing, it rained today, as everybody knows. Couple of council members have been to my house and so has Mr. Dib. I had three panels on my street replaced, two on my side, one on the other side. Water still does not run uphill. I have puddles that sit there for three, four, or five days until the sun dry, dry, dries them up. They used, it used to drain towards Catch Basin. It hasn't drained since they did the, since they did the new concrete two, two years ago. And nothing's been done yet. And last time I brought it up, I don't bring it up that often. I think I was here last year bringing it up. And Mr. Dib said that there was still a contingency being held on that project. I wanna know if that contingency's, if they've been paid all, all their money? Because if, if I had to pay for that out of my pocket, I would've never paid, paid for that crappy job. And I got pictures to prove it. Thank you.
Mr. Deep? I'll let Vince go, then you can finish. Go ahead, Vince.
Drop Council, Columbia Street. I really would like you to guys look at the Campfield location or possibly the location on Warren Avenue there, the Salvation Army. But I can't see keeping a building open for three people. If that's all that's working at Campfield Center, turn it over to the fire department. Get the fire department built there, if that's their first choice. The space is there. We already own the property. So, make your decisions. Let's get her done.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else in the audience?
Council Chair, just to let Vince know that, you know, it is, I think it's the headquarters for our Parks and Rec Department. And also, there's the Dearborn Heights Soccer Club uses that facility for workouts too. So, it's, it, it does, it does have some function.
Very little.
The director, he, I mean, he could probably speak up, but at some other time probably. But I mean, I'm sure he has some plans for that, to utilize it.
Regardless, if we can get it to the, as a fire station.
Public safety is more important.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, what, like the chief said, I mean, that, it's an issue right there by the high school. That's even closer to the high school. That's right next to it.
It's gonna be an issue if it's next to Riverside or if it's next to Crestwood. You know, so either way, you're gonna be dealing with kids. So, take your, take your pick.
Yeah, let's have this discussion real quick. Any other one, anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on the Zoom? I see a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Compton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Have a wonderful day, guys.